Welcome to the Boxborough Planning Board Meeting of at 7:00 PM on September 15, 2025. I am going to, I'm sorry, this meeting obviously is being conducted by Zoom, but as always, the Zoom meeting can be accessed through following the Zoom meeting link on our agenda. And the agenda also has a simple call-in number at the bottom of it as well that can be used. It's accessible by phone. So we'll go ahead and start roll call for attendance. I think we have a couple of members that haven't quite joined us yet, so we'll note the time when they are able to. Starting with Chris Doughty.
Doughty here, present.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz present.
And I'm looking through our people. I think we're waiting for Mark White and Rich Gazzardi. Oh, I see Rich Gazzardi.
Yep, Gazzardi present. I'll be off camera for probably about 15 minutes though, but I'm present.
Okay, terrific. Thanks. And Mark White? Okay, so we'll note when Mark White joins the board, the meeting, but we do have a quorum, so we'll start ticking off a few items here. So it's, I'd like to just start off by inviting any members of the public to make any public comments that they might have for items that are not listed currently on the agenda. So if you would like to go ahead and make a comment, please raise your hand, or you can use the star nine function, that'll do the same thing. And we're not seeing any public comment. Does anybody have public comment? Okay, I'm seeing none. Alec, if you see something that I don't, you please let me know. Usually comes to the front of the line of people here, but I'm not seeing anyone.
Nothing on my end.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on, our first hearing is at 7:05. So why don't we jump into some meeting minutes, Alec? I think we only have one, so hopefully we can get through those. Thank you for pulling those up. Do any of the board members have any edits or changes to the September 3, 2025, meeting minutes?
Hang on, I just gotta look through my version.
I do not.
Thanks, Rich.
I do have one minor edit after line 110 and before line 113. I think we should insert that the applicant requested a continuation during the hearing by communication with the town planner, because we jumped right from the...
Under the EDC?
No, this is on line, I'm sorry, 111, after the public hearing on 365 Codman Hill Road. Am I on the wrong page?
The numbering seems to not be lining up.
September 3rd minutes, right. Sorry, I'm looking at my version here.
Yeah, so Alec has the public hearing starting at 67 through 78?
Huh. Okay, are we in the right, the meeting minutes for September 3rd, or am I on a different date?
Yes, these should be accurate, although sometimes when, when they go into Dropbox, they don't transpose perfectly, but the numbers stay.
All right, anyway, right after line, I guess right at line 74, I suggested we insert that the applicant requested a continuance, a continuation, I said during the hearing by a communication with the town planner. Because we didn't have a mention of the request for the continuance, we just continued.
Yes, I agree, Cindy. We should recognize, we received a written request only minutes, minutes before the hearing was supposed to start, so I agree.
Any other comments?
Oh, wait a minute, I did it one more. Let's see, gotta go back to yours. The discussion under magic when Mark gave a quick summary. I don't believe it's called the Clean Energy Law. I think it's under the zoning act. Sorry, you guys catching up to where I am on there? It just, it just was awkward, I think, but I don't want to make this change if Mark didn't intend it. I was gonna say, Mr. White stated the group met with a representative regarding changes to, and then I would insert the zoning act. And then there will be a new division for clean energy, and the state is likely to add battery storage into the law that insert currently allows solar. Final regulations will be due March 1, the town may adopt the process regarding the, and then I inserted proposed change in the law. But if it really is called the Clean Energy Law, then I'm not aware of. And then a couple more changes, further down under the FTM reports and recommendations. Says the board stated that recommendations for Article 1 were received. I would insert the majority and minority recommendations for Article 1 were received. And then following line, the board reviews Article 5, MBTA Communities, overlay district that made certain amendments to the language. I think we voted to, and voted to recommend at that point. Somebody else can confirm. I think we made a vote at that point. And then same thing in the next line, the board reviewed the Stonewall Bylaw article and voted to recommend. So I don't know if we need to put the, this is a unanimous vote, I believe, in both?
Yeah, I think we usually do, you know, or put the vote into our minutes, so I think that makes sense.
Okay, so both should say and voted to recommend unanimously, or voted 5-0 to recommend. And I think that's all I had.
Okay, just stating for the record, I see Mark White just joined us at 7:07. So we have a full, full board right now. Can someone make sure he's promoted to co-host?
I'll square it away.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, Mark, I know you're just jumping in, but did you have any comments on the meeting minutes of September 3rd?
Uh, no.
Okay. Any other comments from board members?
Good here.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 3, 2025, as amended.
They'll move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Cindy, seconded by Rich. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, as I see you, Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, aye.
Rich Gazzardi.
Gazzardi, aye.
Mark White.
White, aye.
And Werner, aye. Okay, thank you. Rich, 7:08. So thanks for ticking that one off. So now, since it's past 7:05, we can go ahead to continue the public hearing for the Beaverbrook Road OSCD special permit. In accordance with MGL Chapter 40A and the Boxborough zoning bylaw, 7.5 open space, commercial development, and 2.3 special permits, the Boxborough Planning Board will conduct a public hearing to review the application submitted by property owner Campagnelli Trigate Sub LLC to amend OSCD 97-01 and OSCD 01-01. So I'd like to start this off by opening this up for public comment. So if anyone has, if any member of the community wants to provide a public comment for the discussion, I will state that this is not an invitation to read letters that are already in our packet. Those are all in public record, and they're all included in our public, our packet for this evening. But if there are additional comments that people have, in the interest of time, just trying to keep the comments moving forward a little bit. But all of those are available for public to obtain and review as needed. So I'm seeing Abby, go ahead, you're first up. If you could state your name and address, please, just for everyone.
Hi, Abby Reap, 205 Old Harvard Road. I'm actually speaking on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, and this is a public hearing, and so I feel that I should be permitted to read the letter that the Economic Development Committee did send to the Planning Board on September 11. We, the undersigned members of the Economic Development Committee, are in full...
Abby, Abby, excuse me, please, thank you very much. I appreciate that. It is part of the, the public record, and it's part of the packet this evening. We have a lot to get through this evening, so I just ask that maybe you just summarize the EDC's comments. It is, we all did receive these documents, and the public has access to them.
Yes, they do, but this is a public hearing, and I should be allowed to speak and have my time.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. Campagnelli has a proven track record of cooperating and collaborating with the town in Boxborough, and this proposal will bring both financial and environmental benefits to the town. Campagnelli is the town's largest taxpayer. The current tax income from the park totals $1,058,064 annually. With the potential for buildout under the OSCD special permit, Boxborough could see an additional $750,000 to $1.3 million annually. With limited development opportunities elsewhere in town, this additional revenue could provide much-needed tax relief for residents, especially when we consider the burden of paying for a new fire station and an ever-increasing school budget. Environmentally, Campagnelli's proposal will directly benefit residents through their donation of Lot 100 for open space and passive recreational use. In addition, they have pledged to place 94 acres under conservation restriction and provide a grassland management plan on Lots 16 and 17, which is approximately 11 acres. Campagnelli has invested over $8 million in the park since its acquisition in 2021, including but not limited to a restaurant in the park, public water supply improvements, land conservation, PFAS mitigation, wastewater treatment improvements and upgrades, amenity maintenance, pathways, scenic vistas, wildlife preservation, and more. We commend the applicant for their proactive collaboration with town officials and their commitment to environmental stewardship through the clustering of buildings to minimize disturbance. This project exemplifies smart, sustainable economic development. We strongly urge the Planning Board to approve the requested modifications and allow this long-envisioned park to reach its full and modernized potential. This letter was signed by me as the chair, Megan Connor, the clerk of the EDC, John Neeland, and Levanya Salvaraj. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Kristen, name and address, please.
Sure, Kristen Hilberg, 1112 Hill Road. So I'm actually speaking on behalf of the select board. We did have a meeting this past Thursday just to discuss this project. For the same reason, honestly, our letter is almost identical to the EDC's, and we didn't copy each other. I swear, we were not sitting next to each other. But the select board is looking at this in the, in the, that overarching look. We, we trust the Planning Board. We know you're gonna do a good job to protect the town and to make sure that the project is within all of the zoning regulations. As we look at this, though, it's all the same comments, you know, we are coming into significantly trying financial times that are going to have a disproportionate effect on our residential taxpayers. It's been coming for a long time, and now we are looking at an operational override. We're looking at debt service override, we're looking at a fire station, and we're desperately trying to figure out how to maintain our services. So we are just asking the Planning Board to take this into consideration, as, as you're looking at the project as a whole, and also understanding that as they come before you with buildings, you'll have further oversight as each piece is being built out. We all knew this was coming, you know, Cisco's permit's expired, here we are now. We're basically re-upping, and we're having a second chance to, to, to shape it. But we're just hoping that everyone can keep in mind that the overarching situation the town is facing right now, and the burden on every single one of the taxpayers that I'm looking at right now. Thanks, Rebecca.
Thanks, Kristen. Dennis Reap, you're up next. Name your, your name and location, please.
Okay, I'm unmuted, thanks. Dennis Reap, 205 Old Harvard Road. I see in the packet that you have received many comments from a variety of boards, commissions, individuals, most if not all expressing support for the special permit, and I join them in recommending that you approve it. In deliberating this decision, I anticipate that you will carefully consider possible alternatives to this proposal that could, that could come forward if you don't approve it. If not approved, the next proposal may not be by special permit, but could be a by right application for site plan approval that offers none of the benefits provided by this applicant's current proposal. What they are proposing looks like a real win for the town, from my perspective, and I urge you to proceed to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Priya, you're next. Name and address, please.
All right, I'm muted, right? Okay. Priya Sundaram, 120 Patchill Road. I hope the Planning Board would approve this applicant's application, just for all the various reasons that Kristen had expressed. And I also want to know what were the other boards or committees that had letters? I tried to search, I'm not, maybe I wasn't very savvy, I had a hard time. So at least if I know what are the other boards and that, our committees that expressed...
So if you go into the packet, Priya, there's a subfolder under the Beaverbrook. Number one is Beaverbrook, this discussion. There's a number one with today's date for the meeting, and then there's new letters in common. There's a folder that's devoted just to that, so you can access it all there.
Okay, is there any way Alec or someone can at least tell me what, like, what other comments we got from what boards and committees? I just want to know if there were any other recommendations from them, different?
There was the MACOM, there was BC Trust. I can't pull up some of these, they're not labeled as such, like, specific. There are, there's a member of the community, a couple of members of the community, SVT and HCT.
Any other varied recommendation? Anything different?
There's, I would suggest that you probably go through and just read through them. I mean, there's a lot of support for the project generally, I would say. And, you know, we've been receiving a lot of correspondence throughout this whole process from people. Some concern, some support, generally support at the end of this...
What might the concerns be?
Priya, I'd like you to go back through our correspondence, because this has been going on for, you know...
Is there an easy way to, like, put these correspondence? Because it's not very easy to, like, maneuver.
Alec, I guess I'm not the only one. If I'm wrong, but we have the whole correspondence folder under this project folder, correct?
Yeah, so each, each subfolder has different correspondence to it, but every time we go from a specific meeting to the next, we then transfer everything over to the master folder. So all of the letters tonight are currently in this date folder, and then after tonight's meeting, they will be copied over to the general correspondence, assuming that the board will be moving to either continued hearing or deliberation at their next meeting.
Right, but it'll all be underneath this project title, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Alec. Maria, you're up next. Your name and address, if you would.
Hi, Maria Neeland, 201 Picnic Street. Can you guys hear me okay? I'm on the parking lot in 2A, so, okay, I just want to be sure. Thank you, Rebecca. I'm reading this statement of support for the Campagnelli project on behalf of myself and my husband, John. Please note that this is both my personal opinion, and I am not speaking on behalf of the FINCOM, and this is John's personal opinion, and he is not speaking on behalf of the committees he sits on. The Campagnelli proposal includes noteworthy enhancements to land conservation and public safety and provides significant tax benefit to the town. The commitment includes providing 94 additional acres of open space and conservation land. Lot 100 will be donated to the town of Boxborough for passive recreation uses, and this is a valuable lot with a development capacity of 30,000 to 55,000 square feet with a value of $800,000. To support the town's use of Lot 100, they have offered $25,000 for a land use feasibility study, design, or the creation of visitor parking area to connect the accessible pathways. Two members of the Planning Board have used the word, quote, "burden", several times with respect to this donation of land and the $25,000, because the land is worth a revenue of about $10,000 to $11,000 a year. While we find it refreshing that these members are concerned with tax revenue, perhaps the focus should be on the larger tax revenue that will be generated upon completion of this project. Regarding community safety, the plan includes new traffic comming measures on both Swanson Road and Beaverbrook Road. Specifically, two-speed radar indicators will be provided on Swanson Road and two-speed bumps on Beaverbrook. Since the acquisition of the park in 2021, the Campagnelli, Campagnelli has invested over $8 million. These investments include a new restaurant, improvements to public water supply, PFAS mitigation, wastewater treatment upgrades. Public amenities like pathways and scenic vistas have also been maintained, and work on the wildlife preservation has been ongoing. This project offers a significant community benefit. It will provide increased commercial tax base with, when the development is complete, and will allow for continued maintenance of common amenities used by the public. We ask that you close this public hearing tonight with a yes vote for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. And thank you, Alec. Rita, go ahead. Name and address, please. Can Rita Grossman be unmuted?
Rita, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm trying. Okay.
You're good.
All right. So Rita Grossman, 291 Depot Road, Boxborough, Mass. I am not speaking as a private citizen. I'm speaking as the president of the Boxborough Conservation Trust. Just to be clear, as a nonprofit land conservation organization, the legal advice is usually you don't, you know, lobby for a commercial development not aligned with the mission. That being said, our letter did summarize our enthusiasm for all the conservation aspects that this, that Campagnelli is proposing, the 94 acres, Lot 100, and all the efforts that are highly articulated by SVT about how to minimize the impact of the development of 700 and 800, and I'll stop there.
Thank you, Rita. Are there any other public comments? Meredith, hi, go ahead. State your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, I was having trouble with the unmute. Meredith Houghton, I'm a senior land protection specialist at Sudbury Valley Trustees, so I'm not a local resident in Boxborough. But I just wanted to sort of piggyback on what Rita Grossman just mentioned. We're a regional land trust. We include the towns of Boxborough, Harvard, and Littleton, so all very affected by this project, so we've been watching this closely. And as Rita mentioned, you know, we, I think a lot of us know how special of a place the park is and the open space around it. So as Rita mentioned, you know, generally, this has been a really wonderful, open process, and, but, you know, as a land trust, we're watching out for those conservation values. So we continue to urge, you know, mindfulness around this development and a balanced approach, and looking at reduced footprints for the, for the proposed development on 700 and 800. But we're, we're really enthusiastic about, of course, the 94 acres of protected open space, the additional grassland management and shrubland habitat management that's been offered, among other things. So we thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Meredith. Barbara Salzman, please state your name and address, please.
Hi, yes, thank you. Barbara Salzman, 73 Copley Road. I'm, I'm on the Sustainability Committee, but I am speaking as a private individual. And first of all, I'd like to thank the Planning Board for all your efforts on behalf of the town. And I'd just like to ask the developers to make sure, I know that they have talked about all-electric buildings in the past, which I think is absolutely terrific, and I hope they will include the green building practices and build to the specialized stretch code requirements, although the town has not yet passed the specialized stretch code. Our residents care very much about the environment and lowering our carbon footprint. So I hope that, that you will do that and use the most energy-efficient and environmentally sound building practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any more public comments at this time? Rebecca C., go ahead.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Cheney from Harvard, from Trail Ridge Way, the neighbor to this property. And I just wanted to piggyback on what the previous speaker said about carbon neutrality, which would be to see if the board could request the applicant to do carbon-neutral landscaping of some sort, reduce leaf blowing and lawn mowing, and all of those things that contribute to greenhouse gases. The other question I had for the, for the applicant is if they have any update on timing of development? I know people are excited about the potential tax revenue, and I just want to note that there is no tax revenue until things are actually built there, and does the applicant have any update on that? Prospects or timing or anticipated timing of something happening there? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, any additional comment from the public at this time?
Careperson, I see no more public comment at this time.
Thank you, Alec. Terrific, okay. So just, just to back up a little bit and just discuss a little bit about the, what's happened from the last hearing to today. The board members, there were a couple of comments and requests from the board members during our last hearing. We have not received any additional plan revisions or amenity offerings to the town of Boxborough at this time. We did receive from the applicant a letter addressing responses to a MEPA letter. I believe that was, oh, in a dimensional, dimensional chart, right? Those are the two items that we received from the applicant from our last meeting. Am I correct with that, Alec?
You did also receive a draft decision prepared.
A draft decision, thank you very much, yeah. Keep me honest on that. Okay, so I, there's some of the requests that I noted from our last meeting were to, regarding the building footprint, the height of the buildings, providing contiguous wildlife connections through, throughout that Lot 800, specifically, maybe 700 as well. Talking about green, green development and sustainable practices. And then there was a request for the MEPA responses, which we received. So Alec, through Alec, the Planning Board has reached out to our town council, Adam Costa, to talk about the decision that's in front of us today. I believe we got maybe some quick redline commentary. We had asked that Adam join us this evening, but he was unavailable for this meeting. So I know that we're going to need to get his, his eyes on some of this and be able to ask him some questions through his decision process, but I did want to just give the board that information as well. Alec has reached out to him about availability. And Alec, you confirmed today it was October 6 and October 20 are his earliest availability to meet with the board. So just, that was a little bit of background I just wanted to share with all board members at this time and the public as well. So at this point, it doesn't seem like there's a large amount of presentation materials. Alec, would you agree? I'm calling you out while you're eating your dinner here, I'm sorry. But, so, I mean, would, would it be best to move into just board discussions or questions to the applicant? Doesn't seem like there's a lot to review, I would say, but...
I would always recommend just letting, letting the applicant offer any thoughts they have before diving into, into a back-and-forth question and answer between the two parties. You did have a member of the public who raised a question. Whether you choose to address that is up to, up to your discretion, but, yeah.
Johanna Attorney Schneider, are you going to be speaking to this application right now?
I'm happy to speak to the application. Madam Chair Rustian from Campagnelli is also with me, and I may ask him to respond to the public comment questions if the chair chooses to incorporate that into the hearing tonight. We don't have any presentation materials. You know, we really appreciate the board's attention and also the attention of the different boards of the town and members of the public who've been following along with this, and we really greatly appreciate all of the encouragement and positive comments that we have received. We do not have any additional materials or updates to share. I think our position remains very similar to what we've said throughout, which is, you know, we feel like we are offering a number of significant benefits to the town, which we are extremely proud. We understand that there are some members of the board who would like to see this project grow a bit smaller, but the reality is that the benefits that this project is offering to provide, both in terms of the restricted open space, the donations of the space to the town and to the Harvard Conservation Trust, and ultimately, the tax revenue, which we've heard quite a bit about this evening in terms of its importance to the town. Ultimately, we do need a financially viable project in order to provide those things. And so we are not at this time able to make any reductions or changes to the scope of the project, but I do want to note, both respect, with respect to the ultimate design of the... of the building, sustainability goals, the landscaping and the like, we'll be back before this board many times in the future. As we are developing the individual buildings that comprise this master plan, we look forward to coming back and to sharing those plans and to having a full discussion with the board and other stakeholders about individual projects as they come online.
Thank you, Attorney Schneider, I appreciate it. Do, I did hear a question regarding timeline from our public members. Can anyone speak to timelines specifically for this? My gut says probably not, since you don't, you know, there's quite a process ahead of you and you have to find folks to inhabit these buildings and such. But perhaps you can just touch on that a little bit?
Sure. This is Russell Deon, partner at Campanelli. I can touch on the timeline. As I've said to many members of this board and to other folks in the past, I'm the principal in charge of this property, but there's six other principals that all have an ownership stake. There were several members of our ownership team that wanted to submit a site plan approval project for Lot 600 as part of this application, right from the get go last January 2025, when we submitted this application. At my recommendation, my liaising with this board for the past four years, I recommended we don't do that. So we're not here today with the site plan approval application. We also do not have any users lined up to look at the next steps. We have users that come across the radar screen from time to time. The brokerage community advocates for Campanelli as a developer that's competent and able to deliver on their promises. And we believe that we are poised for any requirements that are up in the 495 Route 2 corridor, that we would be their first choice. I do need to just stress that timing is important. And when we do come in with an application, the timing to get approved is part of the whole process of which a client or tenant or user would be interested in a turnkey from a lease or a sale proposal right to occupancy, which includes permitting, entitlements, and construction. So at the moment, we do not have a user in tow. We've contemplated building on spec. But at the moment, that decision has been on hold until we finish this process.
Thank you, Russ. Okay. At this point, I guess we should open this up to board discussions or comments or questions. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to ask? I see your hand going up, Rich. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. First of all, thank you to all the members of the public who not only provided letters of support or points of interest or areas of concern, but, you know, for the participation over the last. I was going back preparing, seeing that we opened this hearing up, you know, well over six months ago. And so it's very much appreciated that people are engaged in the process. So thank you for that. I guess Rebecca and board, where I'm at is, I don't, you know, I think we have, we've got a lot of information, a lot of data. I know there are some questions. We want to, you know, we want to do this correctly. I guess I'd like to know what our, I mean, I know we want to have, maybe we should set up, you know, just go ahead and mark down Adam Costa for the 6th of October, if he's available, because certainly he's going to have to read the decision. But, you know, as I look at it, we're really, and there's a lot of really good input on the site, and that all has to happen. But we're really just being asked to look at a master plan approval. And I think, you know, given where, and I'm not a real estate expert, but I pay attention to what's happening in the marketplace and given a lot of the uncertainties, certainty, I think, is important here. And I think the applicant's basically saying they need certainty for their market, right? As people are interested in looking, they want to be able to say that they're permitted. I don't think the alternative, I think somebody mentioned the alternative. I'm not, the alternative to me doesn't feel like the right thing for Boxborough. You know, whether you're enthusiastic about the development of additional buildings or not, the right exists to private property owners. And I'm just, you know, I'd like to see something happen that's sensible and is balanced. And I think that if we sort of have something that appears to be that, so I just, I worry that the alternative isn't right. So I just, I guess I'm sort of at a place where I'd like to start working on the decision that Alec put together, because there are things to sort out in that decision. There's a fair amount of work to do there. But I'll open it up. I mean, what's in front of us? What, you know, what does yes look like, I'll guess? Are other members sort of where I am, right? What does yes look like? How do we get there? What other, you know, is there anything else we need from the applicant to go before we go do our work? So that's kind of what I'll say for now, Rebecca. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Chris, go ahead, see your hand up.
Yeah, so I just had similar kind of process questions of, so if we close the hearing tonight, we have 90 days to fully button everything up, if I understand correctly. If we close the hearing, then we can't have any further correspondence, basically, with the applicant? So we need to make sure we have enough to go on? Sorry, that's a question.
Yes, I believe that's correct. Alec, do you have anything to add to that?
Just for clarification for members of the public. So the moment the Planning Board closes a public hearing on any special permit, it triggers a 90-day decision period. The board has 90 days to vote a decision and then write their recommendation. Typically, that's done simultaneously at a future meeting. The, that is an accurate description, Chris. At the close of public hearing, no more testimony can be taken. However, experts like myself and town council and town engineering or special land use council are all still available to the board.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess I'm at a similar place with Rich. I think this is a, this feels reasonable and knowing that there could be an alternate that would be, you know, by right and not as beneficial to the town necessarily or the conservation groups involved and all of that, especially seeing the public feedback that we've gotten for any of those groups affected of like, yes, recreational and/or conservation would want that piece. They figure out what to do with it later. So, yeah, I think, I guess, agreeing that I think I'm at the state of, okay, what do we need to do to button this up? And that's kind of a question to the rest of the board, because I think I'm there.
Thanks, Chris. Mark, Cindy? Go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, thanks. So, yeah, heard all the public comments and appreciate that the public has been participating as fully as they have been. Yes, this project started many months ago, but I believe there was agreement on the part of Campanelli to sort of pause things while we were taking up some other business. So, you know, this is, I think we're doing a timely review. Just want to have that out there. I was a little disappointed in the response letter that we received regarding the questions that were part of the MEPA process. I must say, some of those items, I thought, were fairly light lifts and was hoping that we could see some commitments from the applicant on, you know, some minor things like tracking greenhouse gas emissions beyond the required period. Some of the other items, I understand that the sidewalk on Swanson Road does not appear to be feasible. But again, there are a few of those items that I thought were relatively minor and thought that Campanelli, as a good faith gesture, could offer up some additional tracking on the greenhouse gas and also make some commitments regarding environmental standards and things that are in the MEPA process that I believe are part of the certificate. So it's my intent, and I hope Campanelli would be amenable to, including the commitments that are part of the MEPA process in any conditions that we draw, because I believe that those were committed as part of that process and part of the certificate on the SEIR included those things. I guess the only other item that I would like to raise, and again, just offering Campanelli another opportunity, perhaps. And I've said before, I do appreciate the offer of Lot 100. It's five acres of land that has some conservation value and it appears that the town does have interest in doing something with that land. I do want to point out that, you know, that was not a high priority piece of land in the town's open space and recreation plan. But certainly, the town is happy to accept it. And I think we can make good use of it for either recreation or conservation purposes. The more immediate need in town, however, is, has to do with our public safety issues. And the buildout of this park is only going to place more stress on our municipal services, including fire and police. So I guess I would just like to, again, pose the question as to whether Campanelli might be considering some sort of offer to the town to help? Because the land offer, albeit gracious, doesn't help us with our current fire station problem. And it's in a location that doesn't offer an opportunity to use it for perhaps a public safety facility. So, you know, I guess my ask would be, is Campanelli consider helping the town in some way compensation for the expansion of this park, which is going to require more municipal service, fire, and police, to make some sort of contribution to help offset some of those costs? So that is something I would just like to hear from the applicant, if that's under consideration. And then I do some other comments on the draft, but I think we can talk about those later. Thank you.
I guess I give it the opportunity to speak to Cindy's comments by the applicant, if they should like to do that at this time or defer to another time, if you prefer.
No, that's fine. This is Russell Deon again. I'm happy to respond. The proposal that we've prepared is exactly the proposal that we would prefer to go forward with. I think any additional understanding of any municipal assistance on Lot 100 can come out a little bit as we understand how the town may use it, what the investment may be. As the economic opportunities happen in the park, we will be poised in a position to perhaps contribute further. But at this point, our contributions are what we stated, and they can't, they're not changed for this permit process.
Cindy, does that answer your questions?
Yes, I think that's, that sufficiently answers the question. Thank you.
Okay. Mark White? Go ahead.
Okay. Again, I echo Rich's and Chris's sentiments that I'm just trying to figure out how we get to go on this and what yes looks like. This applicant has done many things in good faith. These are things that we've asked for and also things that they've offered. We didn't necessarily press them for all these things. I think some of these things they gave freely. I'm disinclined to heap more requirements on the applicant, just keep adding to the pile, couched in terms of asks, because asks don't always sound like asks. They sound, they start to sound like, like, well, if you don't give us this, then I won't vote for this. And I don't want to participate in that. It's not the applicant's job to help us with the fire station. I mean, given their track record and their willingness to work with us, I think there'd be many ways they would be willing to help us down the road, because they're, they've basically proven themselves to be good neighbors. And I don't think we're going to find a better, a better company to work with. I mean, these people have been patient. They've been wise about what they're willing to do and what they're not. And I think their last document that they sent us in response to our ever-expanding list of asks is pretty clear. What they've said is, look, this is what we're willing to agree to. I think it's a good deal for this town. I think that's pretty clear. This is a good deal for us, and it's a good deal for them. Nobody gets everything that they want. And that is what I call a good deal. When nobody's happy about, they don't get everything and nobody gets, walks away with nothing. So, again, I guess I'd say, how do we, how do we start to work on this, on the conditions here? I want to get down kind of to the brass tacks. And I think we've heard enough public input. I think, you know, we've heard everybody. Everybody's had a chance to speak. And now it's time for us to start to make this thing move forward.
Thanks, Mark. Any other board member comments? Okay, I have a couple that are sticking. You know, I was really hopeful that the applicant would come forward with a little give based on some of the comments that we have shared in the last two meetings. Unfortunately, we didn't get that. But I do have a couple of, just a couple of comments that I just would like to just toss out for tonight. And, you know, I've heard Russ say, you've got the proposal in hand that you're going with. So, but, you know, still need to ask. So I've heard a lot of comments about the value of the grasslands out there for wildlife, bird species, and everything. I understand, I believe, in the decision, Johanna, I think that you wrote up, there's mention of a maintenance plan for that being issued at some point to the board prior to completion of the project, I believe. I may have that wrong. Is there, you know, I know we have this 100-foot buffer from that neighbor, and I'm talking mostly to the apartment complex that, you know, 28 years ago was not there. It's a very different condition now. They're very close to the property line. I would love to see some kind of a plan showing how we're going to have this protected, continuous wildlife space for, of grasslands. And I don't know that we've seen that. And forgive me if you've showed me something I haven't seen or recalled. But, you know, what is the plan for providing that? And I'd also love to have SVT weigh in too. Like, what does that look like? What is an adequate dimension or width for something like that? So that 100 feet of buffer that we have, you know, presumably, a chunk of it is going to be left for screening materials, I'm assuming for the residences. But what is left for grassland behind those buildings? I guess I want to get a better understanding of what that looks like right now to make sure that we're actually providing what we need to do. And if we're not, you know, is there the ability? I don't know how much flexibility we have, looking at the plans, but to move some of these buildings and uses closer to the roadway, further away from the residences, and protecting that space that is not going to be designated for parking behind the buildings as, you know, wildlife habitat. So I'm going to stop there, and I'm just going to toss that one out to you, Russ, I assume, to talk to that or if there's any flexibility to do anything in about that.
Sure. So essentially, there was two or three questions in there, and I apologize if I may miss one, but please come back if I do. The grassland management plan is being proposed on Lots 16 and 17.
Sorry.
And that is a situation that John Rockwood has already introduced to Natural Heritage. And Natural Heritage would work with us to come up with a plan that Natural Heritage would, believes would be best for the region and best for the species in the region. That process has not commenced at this time. John has communicated with Natural Heritage to talk about it. We have commenced a very deep discussion with Natural Heritage as it relates to our conservation management permit. We're in the process of going through a series of upgrades to our permit that relates to the protection for the two turtle species. And that comes at no small feat and no small financial burden as well. But that permit covers 109 acres. The grassland management proposal that we have on the table will cover anywhere from 10 to 14 acres. It hasn't been addressed quite articulately yet, but it could be as much as 17 acres. Those are proposals that we feel benefit the region as well as the 94 acres of development. Lot 800 is 33 acres. Part of Lot 800 is within the 100-foot wetland setback, which we've chosen. Part of lot 800 is within the 100-foot wetland setback, which we've chosen not to work in. And I believe, and I could check on this with Jeff, but I believe in a maximum envelope, along with the 100-foot setback, that we would maximum disturb 20 acres of land in a maximum situation. And I think in reality, it's going to be a little bit less, subject to the two spaces per thousand that we're talking about. Our proposal on the table as an OSCEB is really a glorified zoning amendment. And as Johanna has cited quite a few times, the actual user will come in and dictate a bill-to-suit opportunity, which we will do on that lot. There could be one building, there could be two buildings, there could be three, as shown in our master plan. We just don't have the insight into that crystal ball to project what level of grassland would be left on that site. What I can tell you is out of a 33-acre site, there's about nine or 10 acres that we will never touch. And that creates wildlife connectivity between our development and the Harvard Ridge condominium development. There'll be a corridor there about 140 feet. There's 40 feet on their side of the property line, a minimum of 100 feet on our side of the property line. And certainly, wildlife will continue to transfer from one area to another area quite conveniently. The other side of the site, there's lots of wildlife connections that go under the road through bridges and through culverts and through other types of opportunities where wildlife can get through a roadway or under a roadway safely. I think we have all in. I think we have four tunnels under that roadway for wildlife. So the value of the wildlife is really the value of the 94 acres of additional protection that we're putting onto the site, on top of what Cisco had done originally of 150. So I've talked a bit about the buffer, I've talked a bit about the wildlife. As far as buildings being closer to the roadway, we certainly would examine that on a case-by-case basis. And if we can bring buildings closer to the roadway, we would. Our groundwater discharge area is in the front of that site. And we've been, in our master plan, we cannot build buildings over the groundwater discharge area, and it's been located in our plans. We can build some parking over it. There's a certain amount of it, which DEP needs to keep as open-air, non-imperious, and then some areas we can pave over. So once we have an actual user and we come in with a site plan review, I think we'll really be very acutely focused on all those issues.
Thank you, Russ. That was very helpful. During your conversation, though, it occurred to me all of a sudden, I have been envisioning behind that 140-foot buffer that you're describing. I assumed that within the 100 on your parcel, that a portion of that would be wooded, and that a portion of it would be grasslands, like protected grasslands in some form for wildlife. But now I'm not exactly certain that that is what is planned out there, that it might end up being perhaps a manicured lawn. I guess, could you speak to that?
Yeah, we've not proposed any grassland management plans for lot 800. That has not been discussed from John Rockwood or from this team.
Okay. There was a fair amount of statement about the value of that parcel. So I don't know if anybody, Rita, if you're on, or, oh, shoot, I am spacing on your name right now. But if anybody of the, Meredith, I guess it was Meredith, could speak to like that kind of requirement, or what makes a good grasslands protection area? Maybe somebody could more thoughtfully speak to that.
Ben, Chair, John Rockwood from Echo Tech is, I believe, with us, so he may be able to speak about this. I think part of the reason that we were proposing a grassland management plan on lots 16 and 17 is so that we can use that expansive open space to create a preferred habitat for birds who we understand, maybe on lot 700 and 800 at this time. But even the habitat that's there now does not necessarily have the hallmarks of what's a preferred grassland habitat for those birds. And so the idea, again, of putting that grassland management plan on those two lots, 16 and 17, is to be able to create a better environment for them.
Okay.
But John, you may have something to add.
There's no current proposal on 700 or 800 for any such use?
No, not at all.
Correct. Sorry, John, go ahead.
Yeah, that's correct at this time. Nothing's proposed.
Okay, I just wanted to understand it, really.
We have proposed modifying the hay field on lots 16 and 17 to make it more suitable habitat for a number of bird species. There are some bird species that are utilizing the essentially glorified lawn field areas on lots 700 and 800. It's not preferred habitat, but it's utilized. We're trying to create some preferred habitat on lots 16 and 17, rather than just something a bird might utilize in that manner.
I think I understand. I was specifically thinking about 700 and 800.
With regard to lot 800, a 140-foot wide pathway that connects along the town line would certainly be a valuable wildlife corridor outside of the development to allow from wildlife movement in that direction along the town line. It's certainly a viable thing, and I would expect it to be largely either wooded or shrub-thicket. And that would provide some great habitat opportunities for movement along that property line.
That's, I guess, where I'm going to, John, so I appreciate that. So again, you know, would the applicant consider something like that as part of this conditions, as a condition?
I guess, just to be clear, I'm not really sure what the ask is, Rebecca. We are indicating that there would be a setback of 100 feet. We've walked the site, I would say, about 65 to 70% of that buffer is extremely thick and very vegetated. There is an area mostly to, as you're looking at the buffer from the road, an area to the left that's a little thinner, continues to grow in a bit. And certainly during a site plan review, if we were proposing development over there, we would be discussing enhancing that screening. So from a buffer perspective, we've talked extensively of not, it's a no-touch zone for us. And that's what we've discussed from day one. So that's my understanding of it.
Sure. I'm just thinking from, you know, that our board is, you know, like, very green. We try to be green. We like sustainable practice and development. And when I hear that there's a value to the grasslands to many members of the community, I've heard that. And from a sustainable standpoint, lawns are not preferred, because they, you know, consume a lot of water, and you know, you need to maintain that beautiful green lawn with different chemicals that we try not to utilize in most of our decisions. You'll likely see that in this one. You know, it starts to beg the question whether or not we might be able to put that into some kind of a conservation, not conservation, that's a wrong word, but, you know, some kind of protection to be able to maintain wildlife habitat connectivity out there.
I just want to mention one last thing. I believe, and we talked about this a lot with John when we were discussing, making sure that we have the right to work with Conservation Commission to work within their jurisdictional area, which is 100 foot from the wetlands. We've made a very detailed decision to not propose any development within the 100-foot area of the wetlands. And that in itself expands the wildlife corridors that crisscross through this site extensively. And that takes land away from lot 700 and lot 800 in unison. I don't have that diagram, but I know it's been shown on the plan submitted, and that 100-foot buffer is an enhancement to wildlife corridors.
I work with conservation all the time, Russ, so I know that that is, it's an admirable thing that you guys are not going into the, you know, the 100 or the 50. So I recognize that.
Thank you.
Okay. And then one other concern, again, is very different place from 1997, and we do have that development. You can sense that this is a little bit of a sticky point for me with the residents there. The grade of that building, you know, they're going to be looking eye to eye into this new building structure. They're at the exact same elevation, their rooftops. So when we were on site, that became pretty evident. So my question is, how do we make that less impactful to them? I mean, these are residents that are likely renting apartments that don't have stake in the game necessarily, and they're about to be, you know, having, you know, people viewing into their bedroom windows. So I realize that's a bit of a setback between the two properties, but there is that very real concern for me, that these residents are not maybe being very well represented here. And they're going to have a structure that is, you know, they're going to lose a lot of privacy, in my mind. So is there any flexibility around the height of those buildings specifically close to that apartment building?
My unmuted, I'm not sure.
Yes, you are, you are.
Okay, great, thank you. We've examined that as well, and I believe quite thoroughly that when you drive the road of Harvard Ridge Road and you look back onto our property today, while the vegetated trees are there, you can't even see. That buffer is very dense. There's 130 to 140 to 150 feet of vegetated buffer. We've elected to comply to zoning, which is 45 feet. And we may have a building that's not 45 feet, but we're not willing to make a concession on lot 800 due to height at this time. I think when we look at a building, we look at a site plan, and, you know, TUV is a great example of a building that replaced 143,000-square-foot building that Cisco put a foundation in the ground. And we came in with a user, very fortunately, that we came in with a user with a very clean electronics lab use of 64,000 square feet. I envisioned somewhat of a similar program there, and we've talked about that. Not a similar building size in footprint, but a similar use. And that building is incredibly quiet. It's outrageously sustainable. It's all electric heat pumps. It's quiet. You can't even hear a piece of equipment on that roof. And I really believe that this building, whatever it's going to be someday, is going to be a great neighbor for everybody. And Campinelli is not going to put a building in a park next to a neighbor that would become a problem. We've built 17 corporate business parks in Massachusetts, and there's a reason why we're successful in the communities we go into, because we don't leave people with a situation that's worse than what they started with.
Thanks, Russ. Okay. Any other board member discussion points? Questions? Okay, I'm hearing none. Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, I think there was earlier mention of a conservation management permit that's still being worked out with Natural Heritage, and I think there's some confidential materials in there. Just to your point earlier about, you know, getting a peek at what the grassland management plan would be, is there a way for the planning board to get some insight as to what those plans? I know you talked a little bit about the turtle tunnels and upgrading some of those materials, but it sounded like there might be some new aspects to the conservation management plan that you're working on with Natural Heritage. So is there a way we could get a little insight as to what both of those plans will entail?
Sure, I'll let John speak to that in just a moment, but let me help out the answer first. We haven't commenced any discussions with Natural Heritage as it relates to the grassland management plan, which we intend to do post this hearing and post this decision. On the conservation management plan, excuse me, on the conservation management permit, it's, just to be clear, and you didn't say this, but I just want to be clear to all the listeners, the permit is not being renewed, the permit has not expired. Natural Heritage, being aware of our conditions out there, we confronted them and said during this process, hey, you know, is our permit valid and what we doing good? And they've come out and said, yes, your permit's valid, and what you've been doing is good. Now they've lifted the hood a little bit more, they've made a few inspections out there, they would like us to do what is really called some maintenance. They want us to allow shorter grass in certain locations, believe it or not, and longer grass in other locations. They want to make sure that some of the areas, which this is very sensitive to them, is a good breeding ground for turtles. So they want us to provide and nurture a habitat for turtles to have sort of a den to spawn in. And we're in agreement with all that. And John, you can add a few more details, but I just wanted to sort of talk about the bigger concepts.
Yeah. Again, John Rockwood from Echo Tech. As part of the MEPA process, Campinelli committed to putting together a construction-phase turtle protection plan. And we really can't put that together. It's a fairly common document. We can't put that together until we have a site plan for the particular parcel, 700 or 800, which shows a limit of work. So that's a fairly common document. It's a short document, a couple, three pages with a couple of figures. And that's just standard practices of perimeter fencing and the like during construction to protect the turtles. The other document they asked for as part of our initial consultations with them was an inspection and maintenance plan for the turtle tunnels and for the concrete curbing that was installed around a significant portion of the site to limit turtle access into the developed areas while still allowing turtle access from developed areas if a turtle gets there to go back into the undeveloped habitat. We're working with them on those matters now. The other matters are part of existing conditions within the CMP, and we're just seeking clarification on what they're actually going to require relative to maintenance of the nesting areas and the like. The actual language is already in the permit. There's no amendment or change required. It's just how it is to be implemented, because Campinelli is not the party that originally negotiated those terms with Natural Heritage. It was another entity. And where they've taken over this permit, it automatically transferred to them when they purchased the property. We're just seeking guidance from Natural Heritage on how they want these other matters to be implemented or maintained. It's really all just maintenance work.
And just to follow up again about the timing, and you just indicated, obviously, that the construction management plan wouldn't be pertinent until site plan approval. But the timing of the maintenance, sort of the ongoing maintenance, and, you know, it sounds like you've been in discussions for a while, so I'm just looking for when are we, you know, when would you be doing some actual upgrade on the tunnels and such? Is that?
It's really not upgrading. The tunnels are perfectly fine. It's a matter of removing some trees and whatever that have grown at one end of some of the tunnels, fixing the grading to allow better access to the tunnels in a couple of areas, maintaining the vegetation for a certain distance outside of those tunnels. And with regard to the barriers, it's a matter of just cleaning up some debris that's accumulated on the side of the barrier that's supposed to prevent the turtle from getting into the developed areas. It's all relatively simple.
But is that ongoing as part of your current permit? That's what I'm trying to understand.
So Cindy, I think I can answer your question. We expect to be in a cohesive agreement with Natural Heritage. First off, we're not in any disagreement with them. But the way they would like us to continue to maintain the land, they're actually upgrading the maintenance plan. That's expected to be done either by the end of this calendar year, or certainly very early in the first quarter of '26. And our goal is to hit it first thing after the winter. So that work is not tied to a proposed project. It's not even tied to this decision. It's really tied to a MEPA permit and going ahead.
Okay, that's helpful. And the grassland plan.
Okay, that's helpful. And the grassland plan, sounds like it's hasn't yet been formulated. Um, I think, you know, we're still struggling a little bit to understand what that entails. I think the ag com had some comments about what's being proposed, but until we really understand it, it's just hard to comment on that. So I don't know whether there's something you can share with us, what a typical grassland management plan would be, or it's very tailored to the site. Um, just looking for some more intel on that.
I'm John, at this juncture, there is no grassland management permit until we have a permit. Um, and then we work on a grassland management plan. Uh, this is not an entity or, excuse me, not entity. This is not a proposal that we're proposing to do prior to this decision.
Okay, I'm just, like I said, trying to understand what it what it will entail, but uh,
Generally, what this is going to entail is taking this existing hayfield and converting it from cool season grasses to more of a warm season grass type of environment with some bare soils between, um, patchy shrubs, and it's just a matter of maintaining that through time as it goes forward. It's not one day, it's this, next day it's that. It's a matter of going in there and figuring out which of three methods you're going to take to convert it from the hayfield to the warm season grassland habitat, which is preferred by a lot of the grassland birds.
And is there some follow up to determine how well the management plan is working? I guess that's what.
Absolutely. Natural heritage will require that.
Okay, and that's something that we can be apprised of as as it, again, we're talking down the road, obviously, but just want to understand, you know, that that the town would be apprised of the results.
Yeah, I've had conversations with three or four people at natural heritage, including one of their restoration experts. So we're getting some good information on how to do this, and it's it's a practical, possible solution here.
Thank you.
Uh, Rich, Cindy, were you done? Yeah, okay, Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. Um, so I guess as I as I hear all this and I and I sort of process where we're at, um, this is like, you know, good old fashioned Senate, right? You need you need a you need a sixty percent vote. You actually need more than that. You need close to an eighty percent vote here. Uh, this isn't like the new, you know, today when you can do a reconciliation bill and you just get a majority vote. So, and I said it in the last meeting, I I'd like to see us find a path to yes. You know, and Cindy, you mentioned some things that I think, you know, what I'm hearing is that there's like a, there's like a, um, you know, a horse and a buggy, right? Like, the the permit is the horse and then and then the grasslands come after that, which is the buggy, right? We got to kind of get the permit done in order to support some of the things that are in this plan. Um, and I and I'd suggest maybe that can be addressed in in conditions around the special permit approval. You know, I think we're all at different places, right? I I tend to try to put things on a five point scale, right? And for this one, I kind of sketched out. You've got all the way on the bottom, not good, right? What we're looking at, not good. That's one part of the scale. Then you go up to okay. What we're looking at is okay. Then you go to good. What we're looking at, it's good. Then you go to better. What we're looking at is better. And then you go all the way to great, right? That's the top of the scale. That's the fifth point. We're all at different places on that scale. Um, you know, uh, me personally, like, is it great? Well, what would great be? I don't know. May, you know, maybe great would be, we wouldn't have a building on Lot eight hundred. I think we're hearing that's not going to happen, right? So for me, great's not going to happen. But, you know, development there could be not good or just okay. Because what's on the table right now, there, in the absence of a special permit, there is no grasslands management plan. There are no buffer adjustments. There is no Lot one hundred. There is no uh, ninety acres or whatever the acres going to the Harvard Conservation Trust. There is no additional acreage going into conservation. There is no pathway, right? So to me, a development without this special permit is definitely not good, right? I would, I would say that's a not good thing. That's not even good. It's not good. So this is at least okay. And I'd say that that the applicant by, you know, demonstrating partnership with the town with offering the roadway, the right of way for a desperately needed water system for the people that live on the west side of Boxborough, looking at the the donation and the gift to the town of Harvard, looking at the donation, the gift to town of Boxborough, looking at the uh, the PFAS remediation that's been putting in, looking at the wastewater treatment upgrades, looking at the, you know, the the grand total of investments, it's definitely bet much better than okay, in my book, better than good, right? This is a better project. It may not be great, right? But it's somewhere between better and and, you know, high better. So I I get, but we're all at different places. Like, I I can't, I'm not going to like convince any other board member that you should be a better or great or whatever. That's that's, everybody has to make their own decision. But I will say, and I'll advocate as this board member, I really believe in in my heart of hearts that for the town of Boxborough, this is better than any alternative we can see. And I'd urge us to figure out how we address our concerns, because they're legitimate concerns. I'm not saying that that there there aren't concerns out there. And there are things that we need to address in the decision. But I'd like to see us on a path to 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 working towards that decision. I think that's where we're at right now. We need to get there. Um, stalling is not good. That, I mean, I I don't mean to, I'm not going to say that the applicant will pull it, but we just need to get on with business. And by the way, ninety days is December fifteenth. Please, I don't want to be, I'd I'd like to have this thing wrapped up before December fifteenth. I know I say that ambitiously right now, that may not happen, because things take time, but I got to believe we can do this in three months. So anyway, I urge us to move on to looking at the decision that Alec has put together for us. Thank you.
So just a point of clarity, I don't believe anybody's attempting to stall, but rather get their questions um, answered tonight. Um, that's what we've been doing for the last couple of meetings. Um, okay, so as mentioned, well, are there any other board member comments at this point? Okay, uh, hearing none. Uh, go ahead. Just saw you pop up.
Not fast enough on the hand. Um, so, uh, again, I mean, Rich and I agree on a lot of things, and I agree on this as well. Um, so I get three points. I I don't want to go back to the first one, because the the, well, it will, that, I mean, so so somebody said back back there a little bit uh, that they were close to the property line. And they've moved away from the property line, and the property line didn't, they're not moving closer to the property line in a way the property lines move move closer to them. Um, the Harvard Ridge folks have had ample opportunity to come to these hearings, and none of them has complained about what they were going to see. So so the uh, the idea that that they have to reduce the heights of their buildings, um, I I haven't heard anybody say that, so, uh, other than a couple of our members. Uh, I, the public needs to understand clearly. Every one of these buildings that they build is going to go through a detailed review in public hearing. So everybody's going to get to come back again for every building that they build. And it's, those hearings will be based upon the specifics of those buildings. Um, not the general thing that we're talking about here, but the specific of each building, what its setbacks are, what it looks like, who can see it from where. Um, that's going to happen multiple times here. Uh, every up, every time that happens, everybody is going to have an opportunity to speak to it. Um, that's what we do. Um, and most of the issues here that have been raised are going to be addressed in those those hearings as well. So if they're not addressed here, they're going to get addressed later. Um, that there's no way that they're going to slip through the cracks. And I just want also people to understand that the town needs this type of quality development as much as the applicant wants it. Uh, we need revenue, and the only way to get revenue is through either new growth or saddle the property owners of Boxborough with those with the ever increasing tax bills. So, uh, holding this up just delays the time when we can finally put the check in the bank. Um, and this is, uh, in in what Rich talks about, the, you know, the the spectrum between good and very good, I look at in more stark terms. It's good or perfect. And, uh, again, we've we've been here before. Can we let perf- perfect be the enemy of good? And, uh, and I I hate to see us go down the road the continuously of trying to make perfect be the enemy of the good. I think we've got a really good application here. We've got a good applicant, uh, somebody we, I feel we can trust. Um, and I think there's things that we still have to work out and have have been mentioned before. And I think those are the things that we wo- work out in our decision, and I'm ready to move to the decision. So let's move forward here.
I'll second that. Was that a motion?
We got the hands up still, but.
Not yet.
Um, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I guess I guess mine's quick. Uh, also, yeah, don't let perfect stand in the way of good enough, uh, better. Um, I I I think what we have here looks good, looks like a a net net gain for the town. Uh, I don't, I don't see any reason to to make it take any longer, uh, than it needs to. So I'd be, yeah, perfectly amenable to to like closing the hearing and and, you know, I think that gives us ninety days is plenty of time to kind of polish, uh, polish the decision and all that business.
Thanks, Chris. Cindy?
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, I I I'm very supportive of doing something really, really good on this parcel. This is the jewel parcel, I think, in Boxborough. It's an incredible um, chunk of land. It's three hundred fifty acres of amazing um, conservation land. I think to date, the developer's done a great job, past and prior, uh, past and current of maintaining this property and making it a fabulous resource for the town. I think the intent here is to make it the best that we can make it. I'm not asking to be perfect. I think there are, you know, things that have been raised by the community that, um, you know, we're asking the developer to try and address. We certainly want to work with them. Um, I'm very supportive of, uh, having a great partnership with Campanelli. I think they've been good partners to the town. So I I just want to tamp down this, uh, this sense that there's some sort of negativity, perhaps. Um, I I think we all want to get the best project that we can get, and that that is the goal here. Um, and I think the requests to try and make it just a little bit better are certainly within reason. Um, and, uh, you know, I I I want to be supportive of the project as a whole. It's a great piece of land. I want us to see it uh, used to its its, uh, best in both environmental and, uh, and other ways. So that's kind of my closing statement on that. Thanks.
I would echo that very quickly and to the the tea. Um, the assumption that a couple of members are trying to stall or don't want the best project out here and an unwillingness to work with this applicant is, you know, a little out of line again. So, um, okay, any other comments? Uh, Rich, I see your hand up.
Yeah, and if I came across a saying stall, that wasn't my intent, and I'm not trying to suggest that other members don't want great. Like, I'm just saying that everybody, there's a there's a spectrum out there, right? We don't all have to be in the same place. I'm just trying to find a spot where we get to where we recognize better, this is better. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, um, any other board member comments at this time?
Um, Rebecca, if I may, I'd just like to understand, um.
Sorry, Rich had his hand up. He was done. Go ahead, Cindy, yeah.
Yeah, I I just wanted to understand the availability of Special Land Use Council. Um, I believe we got a very, um, late in the day, uh, red line of the document that, um, I actually have quite a number of comments on. I would like to be able to access council, Special Land Use Council with some questions that I had. So I just want to understand the process, um, as to how we are, um, can get questions posed and responded to from from the council. If he's not available till October sixth, I'm happy to submit my questions, um, in anticipation of a response, but I just want to understand the process.
Thanks, Cindy. So that was going to be my next segue. Um, we keep getting more comments, so. Um, but, um, and yeah, so, um, as I mentioned, that, uh, through Alec, he's been talking to Attorney Costa. He's made the decision available to him. I I believe we got something, but honestly, I think it came through late. I did not get to look at it, um, today, um, nor I don't know if anybody else did, but it's, um, and it's certainly going to be a lot to consume and digest. So, um, he is making himself available, and I think, um, Alec has him tentatively booked for October sixth and October twentieth meeting dates. Um, uh, that's my understanding. Um, but Alec, I'm I'm sure in order uh, an attempt to like make things move along in a, you know, in a reasonable clip, you know, I know we're going to want to talk to him. We're going to want to ask him some questions. We're wanting to feed and get his feedback live. Um, you know, but, um, can, um, I'm assuming it's okay to go ahead and submit, um, questions, comments to, um, to Adam Costa, um, via, through you, I guess.
Yes, so Madam Chairperson, there is a method for simultaneous communication. Effectively, anything a majority of the board would send to me. So if you were all contribute questions or three or more of you would contribute questions, um, I would need to make those publicly available. So please note that any questions you you give me will be provided verbatim to the public, to the applicant, but you can ask questions of Attorney Costa. Um, what I would recommend is, uh, board members percolate those questions in the next forty eight hours. I I can send those to Attorney Costa, and he can weigh in, um, as soon as he's available. If you would like me to give him a date firm that he must reply by, then I can do that as well. Um, that does not need to be at the next hearing, or sorry, at the next meeting, whether that's a hearing or otherwise. He can provide that to you in advance. And again, I just must publicly make that available. Um, uh, and then he will be available on your meeting of October sixth. He will be present at that meeting and available to support the board in, uh, finalizing or preparing the decision.
Alec, what is the reasoning for a forty eight hour turnaround? Uh, for those of us who have our full time jobs and and everything else, that might be a bit of a challenge. Um.
Yeah, no, and my my apologies. I know that's, I know that's an ambitiously quick timeline. Um, Attorney Costa is also moving into fall town meeting season as we are. Um, so I'm endeavoring to just keep him moving as quickly as possible, because if he has a town meeting, then he is explicitly gone for at least half, if not the entire day.
Okay, um, so I I would hate to limit board members, understanding that we're also going into town meeting, um, as well. So we're going to be very busy with all of that. So I I just don't want to limit, um, board member comment, I guess, to such a quick turnaround. Uh, of course, if you can, great, um, but we'll still have opportunity to to provide him feedback following. Okay. Is that okay? Alec, just want to make sure.
If we want to pick a date later in the week or even Monday morning, that that's fine, too. I just want to, I want to give him at least one full week with the questions, uh, and then to post those to you so that you have them available before the meeting.
Before the sixth.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, I understand. Okay, um, terrific. Uh, Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, I I guess may maybe I'm confused. Um, I read a decision, a draft decision that was in the packet over the weekend. Um, and I guess I was prepared to talk about that decision tonight. So I understand there was something that came from Adam Costa, which I did not look at. Um, it seems like we have to turn everything into a lawyer exercise. I don't know why. No offense to, uh, Ms. Schneider, that, no, but like, honestly, I I are we not going to review that decision tonight that I prepared for? Or is there something that Adam proposed that's wildly different?
So Rich, um, we, so yeah, you, we, I haven't looked at it either. I haven't seen his response. I think, um, this this decision was prepared by, um, Attorney Schneider um, and provided to us, uh, as a starting point for the decision. I think it's totally fair to take a high level look at it at this point and 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 give some feedback, because that's kind of what our goal is to provide for, um, Attorney Costa anyways. That's, you know, the the information collection, right? So that we can share a comment with him. Um, so I do think that's fair. I just wanted to make sure that the board understands that his availability and just kind of answering Cindy's questions about how to best go about getting additional comment to him.
Okay, all right. No, I that, okay, I understand it now. Yeah, I do, like, I think the email back and forth and getting questions, that seems to add time. I think if, to me, there would be value in walking through, um, the decision that the applicant has presented, at least that we, and I haven't seen Attorney Costa's decision, so it would be in the context of, let's understand what um, their, you know, what their uh, proposal is, and then we can at least have that perspective. And maybe there are things that we can tease out of it that will be of concern to us that they can think about, and then we can hear from Attorney Costa. That just might be a way to make it go faster.
Yeah, I.
Or fit more efficiently, more efficiently. Sorry.
I don't see an issue necessarily with that. It's fairly short document. It's, um, frankly, but, um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't take issue with going through some of the, like I said, high level things and just kind of being able to take an initial pass at this for, for, um, for the board members at all. Rich, were you all set? Just.
Yeah.
Um, with that, um, Alec, do you want to pull that document up as a starting point? Just so that people can give their first initial take on certain things?
Actually Rebecca, I have a point of order.
Sure. Go ahead.
Um, so a motion to close the hearing requires a majority vote or a super majority?
A majority vote is required to close a public hearing.
Okay. Just wanted to know that. I'm not ready to do it yet because there may be other, other issues that we need to get dealt with. So let's dive into this a little bit and see.
Yeah, we don't even have a decision yet. So, um, but.
Well, we do have a decision. I mean, that's the thing is we got this decision kind of written for us and we, and we did get Adam's write-up. I mean, if you guys didn't read it, I read it. And, uh, there's very little in here that he wrote up, that he commented on. So, um, but I'm willing to go talk about it right now. I, I mean, we're going to be looking at Adam's marked up copy. Is that true?
I don't think so. We haven't even, I haven't seen it yet. Neither has, well, at least. It's not in the packet. It was submitted late.
So Madam Chairperson, I'll ask the question of you. Would you prefer that I pull up Johanna's draft or Adam's draft?
I would prefer that we have Johanna's draft up there so that, you know, in some reasonable time, the other members can review the other document that came in.
I think that's a mistake because there's very few comments here and it's not a good time for us to, to look at it. Why wouldn't we look at a, at what's, what our attorney has already shown us?
Are the comments highlighted? Can we see them?
Yes.
It's with track changes. So it's all in red.
Track changes. It's, it's real easy.
Yeah. And it's in, if you, if you go back to the Dropbox now, what's up there is the updated version with the, with, uh, his comments in there. So if you pulled it Friday night.
I don't think there's any harm in it. Let's put it that way because the words have.
I think it was issued, the only point I'm making, Chris, is that it was issued.
Just a couple of hours ago.
And nobody has had enough opportunity to look at it, right? So, um, I don't think that's fair to make any major decisions or changes accordingly because we haven't reviewed it. That's our standard. Um, so, you know, I don't care if we do a side by side, but, um, you know, I want to be able to give, um, uh, Adam Costa a little bit of a background on this. First of all, get him caught up to speed. I don't feel like he's necessarily had the time yet to be able to do that. And he, you know, be able to express our comments to our attorney. Just the same way that the applicant is, is able to do so with there. So, um, happy to do a side by side if that makes the board members feel more comfortable. But I'm not prepared to respond to anything that Adam's done right yet.
Yeah, no, I. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, he made some minimal comments and we certainly understand that the board needs time to, you know, submit their questions and comments to your counsel. Um, they are minimal. They are in red line. You can ignore them for purposes of this discussion. That's fine with us. But it may be useful at least to have the red line that we're reviewing just so that you can see the places that he's already started marking up.
And with all due respect, we haven't seen this document yet. And I would like to be able to consult with our attorney prior to being able to go ahead and, and make any meaningful comments based on his comments. Um, again, I'm willing to do a side by side if we want to do that. I've already said that. Um, so Alec, if you, you want to pull that up, that's fine. Uh, but I'm, I, I'm not prepared to make any meaningful comments to anything that Adam has provided today to us in the Dropbox a couple of hours ago.
Yeah, I'm more interested in understanding Kemp, the, the draft that's in front of us that I reviewed and, and getting clarity around that. And if we can see Adam's comments while we're going, okay, we don't have to address them, but it'd be good to kind of see it. That might answer, that might be going at one of the questions I had.
So that's what track changes does. So it's, um.
I understand what track changes does. Thank you, Chris.
Okay. But so it's all there.
Is this legible, everybody?
Yeah.
I guess we can't see the, um, the changes that he's suggesting. And I also want to say that, you know, Alec, I mean, um, not Alec, um, Adam Costa needs, uh, you know, a bit of a, a, up, you know, he needs to be brought up to speed on kind of the history of this project. He hasn't been watching all of the hearings. He has not been part of any of this. Um, so that's, that's my hesitancy here. Uh, so it may look like minor changes, but my gut says that once he gets to a chance to discuss with the planning board, there may be, um, some more changes that, that he would recommend here. Uh, Johanna, would you like to just kind of run through this briefly for the board?
Sure. Happy to. Um, I'm going to be looking at my bigger screen off to the side. So if I'm not looking directly at the camera, it's because I'm middle aged and my eyesight is failing. Um, but I am scrolling along with you. Um, I think that the first section of this actually Alec put together. Um, it really is just an overview of the application and the request that we made. Um, you know, it's a description of the location of the property and, um, a very brief recitation of the procedural timeline. Um, you know, the dates on which we met with the board and the, um, board members who participated and the members of our team who participated. Um, and then it goes on to, uh, at the end of page one and into the following page, a list of all of the documents that were submitted as exhibits.
Can I just make a general comment on the list of exhibits? Um, I think that the date that they were submitted was included, but not the date of the actual document. So I, I would ask that, um, and, and again, I don't know if Alec will be the controller. I assume he would be, but you know, that the, all the dates of the actual documents be filled in, not just the date that we receive them. Um, so there's a fair amount of, uh, historic information here that I'd like to make sure that those documents are referenced appropriately. That's number one.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alec. Um, moving on to page three. This really is just a recitation of the background, starting in 1997. Um, then talking about what happened in 2001, flash forward to 2022. Um, and, um, and our current proposal being the master plan. Again, I think this is all background. Happy to answer any questions about how we're characterizing it. But I think you all have seen versions of this, um, background history and our submissions to you over the last many years. Um, then we go into findings of fact, um, which I think is just again, sort of basic, um, statistics or fundamentals of the proposal in front of the board in terms of the addition of the 94 acres of permanently protected open space. Um, lot 100 being a subsection of that. The 46 acre Harvard parcel donated to the Harvard Conservation Trust and then a perpetual open space restriction with respect to the remaining open space areas. Um, going down to the next page, it is the, uh, five new buildings in, you know, rough description. And again, I'll just highlight for the board, as the board is well aware, because I've said this many times and I apologize. I'll say it one more time. This is the outer bounds of what we are seeking approval to do. Obviously we'll come back before the board with specific proposals, um, for individual buildings, none of which will exceed what is set forth here. Um, we have a description of the anticipated uses. Again, that will come back before the board. Um, we are noting that we are, um, seeking to reduce the number of parking spaces to two per thousand. And a note just about how this is a 942 space reduction park wide from the previously approved condition. Um, we have a brief description of the required mitigation, the traffic mitigation through the MIPA process and DOT's section 61 finding. Um, we've got a note next, um, about the wastewater treatment plant being restored to its 80,000 gallon per day capacity. Um, and some general observations about, um, sort of the ecological components of the master plan that we have discussed both tonight and at prior hearings in terms of being located away from wetlands, buffer zones, archaeological resources, and that the development is primarily, um, concentrating on previously disturbed land. We will comply with our existing, um, conservation and management permit, which remains valid and in place. The focus on that really is state listed turtle species. Um, we have another, this is on the top of page five now, talking about the contributions to the commercial tax base and enhancing public recreation. There's an acknowledgement about the almost two miles of easement that Campanelli has given to the Little Ten, uh, water main extension in order to provide PFAS free water access to West, West Boxborough. There is a note about the existing solar array on lot 600, which was reactivated in 2024. And then the final note, um, in these findings, um, has to do with the information that we have submitted to the board in terms of a range of anticipated additional commercial tax revenue, which we believe is a big benefit of this proposal. Um, the next section, um, and I'm not going to necessarily go through all of this in detail. A lot of this was already in our application materials. Um, but this is a walkthrough of how the proposal complies with the OSCD criteria in the bylaw. Um, in terms of, you know, being in conformance with the purpose and intent, it is clustering development. It is putting a heck of a lot of open space under conservation. Um, then, uh, you know, criterion B, working in harmony with the natural features, preserving wetlands, et cetera. Um, providing adequate access to common open space, um, and, uh, criterion D, overall design and site plan of the OSCD is superior to that of a conventional subdivision and warrants special consideration. Um, I think some board members have addressed this this evening. You know, this site is developable without an OSCD special permit. We think that that is the OSCD plan that we are proposing is the most beneficial because it does not just convey, you know, the economic benefits that we've talked about, but it does put a lot of land under conservation and really does allow for the preservation of natural resources and a more environmentally friendly development. Um, so would you think that this is preferable to what we would be, at least from the town's perspective? And we like the plan. We think it's better than what could be done by right here. Um, next criterion, um, you know, the open spaces of a size, shape and dimension suitable for park recreation, conservation or agricultural purposes. I know that the board has previously expressed its satisfaction with the amount of open space that we are planning on putting into restriction. Um, you know, it is 71% of the site that will ultimately be, you know, reserved for conservation purposes. Um, the next section of the decision, um, hits on the general special permit criteria from your bylaw. Um, and, you know, again, social and community needs. I think we have tried very hard to be responsive to, you know, what we have heard from various stakeholders about, you know, the needs of the town. We are, you know, trying to meet that through both the open space conservation, the donation of lot 100, the offer of $25,000 cash and seed money for planning. Um, and we will also, you know, we've got a lot of nice, you know, public recreational space. Um, we will continue to maintain that. We will do some things to enhance, um, public access to the existing recreation facilities. One of the things that we are particularly focused on is installing new wayfinding. I think that was a suggestion, Cindy. I think that came from you about, I'm sorry Rebecca, it might've been you, might've been both of you, um, suggesting that we install new signage, um, which we are happy to do to make it easier for members of the public to navigate their way through the park to find those public recreation uses. Um, you know, again, with respect to traffic flow and safety, we are sticking by the commitments that are set out in the section 91, uh, section 61 findings from DOT. Um, as discussed with the board, you know, we are also, um, proposing to provide traffic calming measures in the form of speed radar indicators on Swanson Road and speed bumps on Beaver Brook Road. Um, you know, in terms of adequacy of utilities and public or private services, we do have, um, a groundwater discharge permit. We have restored that to its, um, original capacity of 80,000 gallons per day. Uh, next criterion, you know, density of population, intensity of uses. Um, one thing that I want to highlight, and I know that we've had a lot of discussion tonight and some other nights about what is going, you know, how we are going to plant that buffer between us and the Trail Ridge condominium building, um, on the other side of lot 800. Um, I do want to emphasize that the byright buffer is 50 feet. Um, if this were to be a byright development, you know, someone, we or someone else could come in and build something 50 feet from that property line. We are happy to agree to slide that out an additional 50 feet to 100 feet. And that really means that we're about 140 or 150 feet away, building to building, which is an awful lot of space. And again, much better under the OSCD than it would be in a byright scenario. Um, we've talked about lot 100. We've talked about the impact on the natural environment. You know, we are continuing to work with natural heritage. Um, you know, on our existing conservation and management permit, you heard John Rockwood tonight talk about some of the things that we are doing in that regard. Um, you know, as a condition of this approval, we are happy to develop our grassland management plan for lots 16 and 17. John talked about some of the details for that. And just to underscore what Russell suggested earlier, um, which is absolutely the case, we would not ordinarily be planning on doing that with respect to 16 and 17. Um, we are willing to do it, however, as a condition to this approval. Um, and we will of course continue to work with natural heritage, both on that grassland management plan and, um, on other conservation issues. Um, impact on health, we run through that. You know, we do think that, you know, the uses that we are contemplating, similar to the TUV use will be extremely clean. Um, and we also, you know, again, noting in here the easement, um, for the water main extension project, noting here again, you know, just the public benefit to all of that conservation space. And not to beat a dead horse, but obviously there is a significant benefit in terms of fiscal impact. Um, the next section of this is additional findings. One of these has to do with the, um, the fact that even though we are donating, and this is consistent with what was in the prior approvals, going back to, you know, 2001 and 1997, even though we are planning on donating, um, lot 100 and the Harvard parcel, we would hope that the board would acknowledge that, um, even though those will no longer be in Campanelli ownership, um, the acreage will be considered part of the site for zoning compliance purposes in terms of calculation of FAR, lot coverage and other, um, and I guess most importantly, open space for purposes of the OSCD provisions of the bylaw. Um, the next section is, I will admit, I didn't draft this. Uh, I took this from the prior decisions that this board has issued on the predecessor OSCD approvals. This has to do with the, um, commercial development period, as this board is aware. Um, you know, we are asking for a 20-year commercial development period. Um, you know, we've talked about this, I think numerous times during this process and it still is our position. It's a big development and it takes time. And, um, so we are asking for the time to do this the right way and to make sure that we have the right users that are beneficial to the park and beneficial to the town. Um, so that's what this section talks about. Um, and then finally we jump into conditions, which Adam Costa would like us to number in the future and we're happy to do that. Um, you know, this is about, you know, the future buildings will go through site plan. Of course they will. You've heard me say that a million times. Um, everything will comply with the dimensions set forth in attachment A. I think Rebecca, you had noted earlier that you'd seen that we had submitted that chart. We are envisioning that that chart is appended to this decision so that everybody knows the dimensions that we are operating within. Um, the next bullet has to do with, um, you know, recordation of a perpetual restrictive covenant for conservation purposes. Um, obviously the board, um, and/or town council and/or special land use council will of course have the right to review that and we will discuss that before that goes on record. Um, the next, uh, condition has to do with, um, the donation of lot 100 and the payment of the $25,000. Um, you know, we had put in language, you know, saying that, you know, everybody in town who needs to sign off on that donation needs to sign off before we do it. Um, I think members of this board had raised in the past that, you know, this may be something that requires a town meeting approval. Um, so we just built a little bit of language in here saying, you know, that. it needs to be approved by everybody. We can't just do it. And I think that's, I think we're all in agreement on that. I will just note that you can see in the language that Adam Costa added, you know, if something happens on the town side so that we can't donate lot 100, if the town doesn't want it for some reason, we will discuss with, you know, the town and the board, another way of satisfying, you know, some alternative. And I think that's absolutely fine. This next bullet has to do with deeding the Harvard parcel to the Harvard Conservation Trust and providing the board with recording information about that. The next bullet has to do with that grassland management plan, which we will work with natural heritage on and of course, provide a copy to the board. The next is a condition that comes directly verbatim from the prior permit decisions about providing residents of the town with access to the recreational use spaces for hiking, jogging, cross-country skiing, et cetera. You know, we can have some reasonable rules and regulations and but, you know, this has been, we've been operating under these terms all along and we intend to continue to do so. And Adam wanted to better define some of this, and I think we're more than open to doing that. Adequate public parking will be provided. We are going to be providing some additional public parking spaces as a condition of this, both at lot six and lot 700. We'll continue upkeep of the phase one public amenities, installing that new wayfinding signage I mentioned before. Beaverbrook Road will be maintained as a private road, no problem with that. This next bullet has to do with the installation of the traffic calming measures I mentioned earlier. Next bullet again is integrating as a condition of this decision, the section 61 findings from the MEPA process. And here's the site plan review piece and recrodation of this decision being required. That was a lot. Happy to answer any questions, but that's broad brush overview of what we have suggested that the board use at least as a starting place for a decision.
Thank you, Johanna. Appreciate it. Rich, you have a question or a comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Johanna, for going through that. I did not realize, and I guess I didn't maybe pay close enough attention, that that was something that that you had worked to prepare, and I guess Alec could help with that. So, so thank you for doing that. That's, that's helpful. And I, not that I'm going to comment on Adam's comments, but I see he was going down a sort of a set of questions that I had. And it was really about the timing of things, right? So, and I, and it was hard for me to glean it, and I did admittedly read it like quickly and then went back and I said, okay, we'll, we'll get a chance to peel this apart in the meeting, thinking that Adam might actually be here. But my question is around timing. So like, when do the parcels get conveyed? And I know that was in Adam's notes. When do the parcels get registered with the registry of deeds as protected? And when does the permit start, right? There's a 20-year period from registration of the permit. When does the permit get registered? Those, those were kind of three questions, you know, all about dates and, and just understanding the timeline.
Right, right. So I am happy to give you what we have proposed and just because we've proposed it, it's what makes the most sense to us, but I don't intend to be trying to dictate terms here. You know, this was a suggested starting place, again, that I thought made sense. You know, the concept of the permit sort of starting at a date that's not tomorrow, for example, or even the date of, you know, the date that this decision gets signed, is a concept that again, is being carried forward from the prior permits that were issued for this OSCD previously. And part of the reason, as I understand it, and there's some preparatory language here that, you know, again, came right out of the, the prior decisions about how, you know, the problem is under chapter 40A. You know, special permits like this one can lapse, you know, after, I think, you know, two years or three years, depending on what your town bylaw says. And so the idea was to create sort of an alternative framework to allow this to, you know, be quote unquote activated, but then have a longer period for what's contemplated to be a phased development. And so what we are proposing in terms of substantial use, which is the standard under 40A, is that substantial use will have commenced upon recrodation of the permit under 40A section nine and recrodation of a perpetual open space conservation restriction of the new open space areas. And I'm excluding from that lot 100, and I'm excluding from that the Harvard parcel because we are planning on jifting those out. So this would be the other open space areas, and that would be, that would pass that sort of substantial use test under 40A. And then, once substantial use is commenced, our rights would fully and irrevocably vest, and the special permit would not lapse until the expiration of the 20-year commercial development period. However, we are building in some things about when we need to record the open space restriction. And really that is, you know, issuance of all permits and approvals for this master plan and issuance of a building permit for and commencement of construction of any permanent commercial building within the master plan. So again, it's not a tomorrow thing. It's not a December 15th thing. We don't have to record the open space restriction until this master plan is issued. The appeal period has run with no appeals being filed, and we get a building permit and start construction on a building shown on the master plan.
Okay, and you're saying that that, that sort of mirrors what was in the original decision?
It does.
From 2000? Okay.
It does, yep.
And issuance of the master plan is what? You use that term, OSCD, issuance of the master plan is a, what, what is issuance? I understand recording, recording this permit. I understand a permit for a building after site plan. What do you mean issuance of the master plan?
I think it's approval by this board, and again, that is certainly subject to wordsmithing, and I'm happy to work with either the board or with Adam Costa. You know, if there's a, a clear term, this again, was sort of the language that was used in the prior permit, and I tried pretty hard not to monkey with that because I thought that we were all best off using a comfortable framework, but that doesn't mean that it's the right word. And if there is a clarification to it, we're happy to do that.
Okay, and so you, if I, just not to, not to repeat your words, but I just want to make sure I understand what, what's happening here. So what you're basically saying is the recording, you're not required to record the open space commercial development special permit right away. There is no timeline. The, you're just required to do it upon the issuance of a, essentially a building permit for a building. So you would have to, in order to get the benefit of the permit, you would have to at least file it by the time concurrent with or immediately prior to issuance of a permit to actually go begin construction on a building. Am I tracking?
So it's, Alec, are you, are you driving the document on the screen?
Yes.
I think just pick, you can pick one of them. It doesn't really matter. Adam didn't have any comments on this section, but if you can go to, I think it's page 11, and what we're looking at are, there's a series of little Romanate numbers. I just think it might be easier, Rich, if we've got this up on the screen and we can walk through it. So what I am looking at, so I think, you know, it's, it's, the setup is a little funky, right? But let's see if we can follow along. So substantial use of the special permit, I'm looking in Romanate one, little I, and A and B, right? So we start substantial use of this permit when we record it, and we record the open space restriction. The next important part here in terms of just setting up the timeline is in Romanate three. Because the substantial use doesn't start until we have recorded the open space restriction. The open space restriction, looking at little A, does not need to be recorded unless or until basically the master plan approval goes hard, right? You guys have approved it, we've got it in hand, and all appeals have run. And two, or little B, is that we have a building permit and have commenced construction of any building within the master plan. So I'm just, just by way of example, you know, Russ mentioned earlier, you know, we have, you know, at times talked about maybe, maybe it's building 600 that goes next. So under that scenario, you know, we come back to you, we get site plan approval for building 600, we get a building permit for building 600, we start construction on building 600, and then boom, we are recording that open space restriction.
Okay, and, and the issuance under A, issuance of all final permits and approvals required for the master plan is this special permit?
It's this, it's this.
Okay, all right. Thank you. You've answered my question. Thank you.
Can I just ask a follow up?
Just a second, Cindy. Just to piggyback on Rich's comment, you know, I just pulled up, it's probably not the most relevant recent decision that we've had, but it is a different format that we kind of follow it, maybe a little bit easier to follow, where, you know, where we actually identify prior to what it is. And then we list out everything underneath that is relevant to that. So prior to issuance of building permits, prior to construction, prior to, you know, and so we have subcategories underneath each of these. It's just very clear and it's bold, and it's, you know exactly what has to happen underneath those areas. I find that some of this feels a little lost in your text, and I realize you're trying to follow a previous format, which is understandable. It just might be easier to understand, and I don't know if that's a little added information to what Rich was trying to say, but it just makes it a lot more clear to me when things happen.
And I think that, that the conditions themselves lend themselves to that kind of organization. We're happy to do that. I don't know that that works in terms of spelling out the commercial development period because that's such a strange animal, and as far as I know, it's sort of unique to this situation. If there is a better way to organize this, like, we're very happy to, to do it differently. Again, I was trying to kind of match it to the framework that, you know, we've all been working with on this property, you know, for the last however many years. But, you know, again, that doesn't mean it's the right way to do it.
I was speaking more to the condition, so I would probably agree with you on that, Johanna. So, but more to the condition area.
Understood.
Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand then, the commercial development period, you've inserted 20 years. I think we still need to discuss that, but are you suggesting with this language that the commercial development period doesn't begin until the first building permit is received? So if it takes you two years to get your first building permit, the commercial development period doesn't start until that time?
It's, it starts, the clock on the commercial development period starts running on the date of recrodation of the open space restriction.
And the open space restriction is not being recorded until you get your first building permit, right?
That's correct.
So there's a, there potentially could be a lag on the start of the commercial development period for some time. And I guess my question, and I'll go back and look at the prior decision of 101, but was it structured the same way, you know, offhand, because that sounds like a long, a long lag.
I think that it was, and I think, you know, I think that it's 0101 and 9701 that you want to look at, just, you know, as a comp.
Right, okay. Well, I just suggest that, that could be a very long lag time if the building, the first building permit doesn't get issued for some time, and the commercial development period hasn't begun, you know, we could be keeping that development period open for a very, very long time. So I guess I just want to understand that, and I may make, make some suggestions to tweak that. Thanks.
Cindy. Additional board comments right now? I'm noting 904, and we have a very patient next applicant up. So yes, Chris, go ahead.
Just real brief, I guess I would also be more comfortable, sorry, I keep sitting and standing with the, with the desks in and out of camera. I would echo the previous sentiment of be a little more comfortable if it was super clear and defined what the commercial development window is. Because I was originally thinking that 20-year window started from issuing a, or like, decision on this, not permit of the next building, which could come in, you know, could come in two months, could come on in five years. Because that adds a little bit of uncertainty to how, how big, how big the window actually is. Yeah, because that's all I have to say there.
Got it.
Thanks, Chris. Additional comments at this time? Go ahead, Mark.
I guess apropos that, so i- is this governed by law? Or is this just a duplication of a prior agreement?
Mark, this is just a duplication of the last two permits issued for this OSCD.
Okay, so the, so if we wanted to say that the timeline starts when you get your special permit, we could ask for that. It's not like the law precludes us.
It is, it is, this is, this is a choose your own adventure kind of thing as opposed to something that's coming out of a statute.
Okay, I just wanted to know how squishy it was, what, what law said versus what, what's been agreed to previously. Thank you.
Any other board comments at this time? Okay. Alec, next steps, we have some comments that the board can review from, from Adam. Provide him some comments at the, the board's earliest in advance of the October 6th meeting, where he will attend that meeting with us. And we'll have a little back and forth session during that period, is my understanding, between the board and, and directly with Adam. Applicant is, I presume, will be there at that meeting as well. But it's an opportunity for the, the board to have some discussion time with, with Adam at that time. He is being provided with all of the previous decisions and stuff to get himself all caught up to speed in advance of that meeting. I just want to make sure because it's, it's a rather complex, you know, application or historically anyways. So that's great. So he's going to have a chance during the middle of fall ATM too.
He's already familiar with those documents from when we did this in 2022. I mean, they're dense and you always have to go back to them. But he and I spent a lot of time back in 2022 discussing these documents and these provisions.
Get him brushed up on it.
It's just a refresher for him, not like a new study, yeah.
So anything to add to that, Alec?
No, so, Madam Chairperson, my question back to the board and to the applicant mutually here is whether the applicant would like to
Uh oh.
Oh no.
With Attorney Costa live on the meeting.
Uh, hold on, back that up, Alec. You, you froze for a minute.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
There we go. Sorry about that. The, the question back to both parties is whether the applicant would like to be a part of that dialogue with Attorney Costa, or whether you, the board, would like to begin your deliberation process. If you aren't prepared to stop taking testimony, you can close the public hearing and move to deliberation. Johanna and, and the Campanelli team, they might have reasons to ask you to close the, the hearing process. They might not be prepared to submit more, more documentation, but it might be beneficial to them to, to leave the hearing open, so it's a both parties question here.
Alec, I think that, and obviously I defer to what the board has to say on this, but I think that we would like the opportunity to have a dialogue with Attorney Costa at the, at the October 6th meeting, to the extent that there are going to be. And I think inevitably there will be, and we understand that, you know, changes or tweaks to conditions. I think we'd like the opportunity to participate in that dialogue.
Okay, so Madam Chairperson, by my opinion, that would require you to continue this public hearing. You would continue it to October 6th at 7:05 PM. And I note that time because your application that was previously scheduled for that time has requested a withdrawal without prejudice.
Thank you, Alec. I see hands up. I guess we'll probably answer those questions first before we, I ask for such a motion. Go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, number one, I would suggest not closing the public hearing. I think we have to talk about conditions. Again, the draft that we received was prepared by the applicant. I don't think the board has had the chance to talk about conditions that were in that draft and any other conditions. So I would recommend we keep the public hearing open. I also wanted to ask again, Um, I also wanted to ask, again, I have a, a red line of the version, um, that we were issued, uh, as part of our packet. And I'm just curious, how do we get that? So they either, um, one merged document, it sounds like Rich might have a red line, um, you know, there's some questions, there's some comments, there's some changes in language. Um, how do we get that all sort of merged or at least identified so we can move through this without being too laborious? Um, so just curious about that.
Uh, Madam Chairperson, if, uh, board members provide me with any redlined and commented copies of the decision, I can merge those together into one draft. Again, the rules of simultaneous communication. Um, when I provide that to the board, I must also post that publicly and provide it to the applicant.
Sound good Cindy, that answer your question?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think that's what he explained to us a little bit ago.
Sorry.
A lot of sense. Um, um, Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, real quickly, I support leaving the hearing open. I think this is a, this is a really important decision for the town. We need to, we need to make this a partnership of sorts, so. Not of sorts, we need to make it a partnership, so, all right, we have to collaborate. Thanks.
Agreed. Um, thank you all. Um, okay, so any other comments from board members? Okay, um, so could I, um, get a motion to, um, continue this hearing to, oh? Oh, okay, um, just a minute. Uh, can I get a motion to continue this hearing to, uh, October 6th at 7:05 PM?
Some move.
So, second.
Thanks, moved by, uh, Chris and seconded by Rich. Uh, roll call, uh, any deliberation on that? Okay, uh, as I see you, Rich Gazardi.
Gazardi, aye.
Uh, Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, aye.
And Mark White.
White, aye.
And Werner, aye. Okay, thank you all so much. Um, thank you Johanna, Russ and team, uh, for joining us tonight and taking the time. Uh, we'll see you again on the 6th.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay, um, let me get back to my document here. Um, all right, so, um, we are going to continue the public hearing for 975 Massachusetts Ave Site Plan Review and Stormwater Management Permit. Uh, in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, the Boxborough Zoning Bylaw 2.5 Site Plan Approval and the Boxborough Stormwater Bylaw. Um, the Boxborough Planning Board will continue a public hearing to review the application submitted by Goldsmith, Prest and Ringwall Incorporated on behalf of the applicant BHG 109 LLC to construct an eight unit contractor storage facility. Um, thank you very, very much for, oh, yep, Mark, you're going to recuse yourself?
Yeah, I have to recuse myself because I am butter to the property.
Okay, thank you for raising your hand. Um, uh, so thank you to the applicants for being patient through that long, um, last hearing. Uh, we've had a lot on our plates as of late, uh, which has kept our meetings nice and healthy. Um, so, uh, with that, um, I don't know, is Limhot here to give us a little bit of a presentation, Alec?
Uh, yes, uh, Madam Chairperson, Limhot and, uh, Bruce are both here on behalf of the applicant. Sue Carter is also here. Um, if I could, Madam Chairperson, I do just want to get ahead and for the public who are present, um, I've shared this with the applicant, uh, and with the board. Um, but our office did fail to provide a document to the board in advance of tonight's meeting. Um, I have expressed my apologies, but I'll express them again here. Uh, we recognize that slows your ability to process these applications and consider them at hearing. Uh, but Limhot has walked through with me, um, some feedback he would like to get from the board that I think, uh, you are still able to give at this point. I think you've had those documents for a while now. Um, as well as Limhot and the team have worked hard to resolve comments that the board has previously provided. And so I wanted to note that because I believe he will show you those as well.
Thank you, Alec. Um, and I'm just, just noting that the plan that, um, was left out of it was the landscape plan. Um, so that was the page 11 of the, um, 11 page document was missing. Um, okay, and were we going to get additional comment from Sue or is she just speaking to it today?
Um, I will be just speaking to it today. Basically, most of our issues have been resolved. I have a few comments from Bill that will make it the appropriate time.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Sue, for joining us and staying so late tonight. Um, Limhot, would you like to go ahead and, um, present to the board?
Yes, of course. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
Um, do I have permission to share my screen?
Uh, yes, Limhot and Bruce, you are both, uh, co-hosts on the meeting, so you'll be able to share screen as needed.
All right. Let me just bring up the plan already. Can everybody see that? Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. So, um, Limhot, project engineer at GPR, I want to kind of briefly go over the, uh, the few changes that came with the site plan revision, um, in response to the peer review, a set of peer review comments I've received from places. Um, I'll try to go through them as, as quickly as I can. I know, you know, it's been, it's been a relatively long meeting already. Um, but, um, you know, kind of briefly going over it, the first change on this sheet right here for sheet 2.1 for notes, uh, we incorporated the additional, uh, note, um, to state that no greater than 1,000 cubic yard of fill is to be removed off site. This is in pertaining to the withdrawal of the earth removal permit that was done, um, at, you know, pretty close to the initial submission date of the, the project itself. Um, that's just, so the additional note is just to clarify the, the intent of the project to make sure that we don't need to have an earth removal permit um, for the grading work that's, that's going to be done on site. Um, second change pertaining to the well and replication plan. Um, this was a comment received, uh, from places to provide the actual well and replication document um, onto the well and replication plan itself, so it can be incorporated as part of the, the overall site plan set. Um, let's see here, the third change is regarding the existing trees at the front of the site. Um, we went out and located a couple of trees that are close, um, you know, 12 inches of greater within the right away at the front there, you know, we had previously located these three. That's the previous location where we had come in with the driveway access. Um, now that that got shifted to the left of the sheet, you can see that we're removing these two trees at the front here. And with the, um, with the, the showing of these two trees, um, we are, um, including an additional waiver. Let me just scroll up to that. So, the waiver request is for section 4.5.3. Um, basically waiving the requirement to locate all the trees along the front of the project because we're already locating the two that we're, we're actually taking out. Um, obviously, the, um, the areas that we're not trying to locate additional trees in would be the section left of where we have the driveway coming in, if you're standing on Mass Ave. Reason being is that, um, you know, due to site constraint, it, you know, realistically wouldn't be able to locate that driveway location any further left. And, you know, going right would get us closer to a covert crossing in Vernal Pool that would, wouldn't make it possible essentially. Uh, so we're, we're showing where we need to show it for the location that we're coming in. Um, but asking for a waiver to not have to show the rest of the trees within the right of way. Um, there was a comment to have the seed mix as well as the hatching for the seed mix for any disturbing area shown in the landscaping plan. So let me just scroll down to that. Um, which we have done. I understand that the board, um, may not have enough time to review this landscaping plan, so, you know, I'll just talk briefly about it. Um, you can see that the hat, the hatching for the, uh, restoration seeding is shown on the plan here. We did also include the additional plantings at the top of the retaining wall, shown right here in front of the building, as well as a roll plantings at the bottom of the retaining wall, shown down here. And that brings me to our next waiver request for the number of planting or shade tree to be provided. Um, that must be adjacent to a parking area. Under the zoning requirement, we're supposed to provide, um, 12. We're asking for a waiver to have to only provide nine. We added one additional tree over here. Um, but due to the location of the septic leaching field being here, we didn't feel comfortable locating additional trade, uh, shade tree due to the close proximity. So we didn't want the roots to, to disrupt the system in any way. Um, additionally, we included the, uh, the roll plantings at the front of the building to try to minimize the heat island effect, um, on the driveway pavement connecting the, um, parking spaces on both sides. So we feel that the amount of planting provided, um, in order to kind of mitigate for the lack of three trees, three shade trees for the parking spaces, um, are sufficient. Therefore, um, that's why we're asking for the waiver. Um, see here. Um, there was a comment regarding the street number or sign. And ultimately what was decided, it was the, uh, providing a landscaping boulder with the actual street number inscribed to it at the front rather than, um, any mailbox, um, then there won't be any mailbox at the front here. It's just going to be the landscaping boulder with the street number on it. Um, I believe with that, um, those are really the, the major changes that I really want to talk about. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, oh, I'm sorry. I also want to address a couple of comments from some of the planning board members, um, that brought, brought them up last meeting. Uh, one in particular from Rich regarding the view from Steel Farm. Um, I provided information via email through Alec. I'm not sure if the board had a chance to discuss it or if you'd like me to kind of go through it, uh, through the email, I can certainly do that. Um.
We didn't discuss it, but it was included in our packet, um, for this evening.
Okay, um, I guess so.
I, I'd, well, I mean, Rebecca, I mean, it, you know.
It's totally fine, Rich, if you want him to walk through it, go for it. That's
Yeah.
Perfectly fine.
Okay, no problem. Let me just pull up the email so I can, uh, better go through it. Um, so the Steel Farm building is located approximately 2,500 feet away from the proposed building. And in between that two, the two area, you know, where the proposed building is and the Steel Farm building, there is a large area of mature, uh, evergreen trees. Let me just see if I can pull up the area. Uh, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. So here's the Steel Farm building and here's the distance of approximately 2,500 feet long to where the proposed building is. Um, as you can see, there's a large area of evergreen trees over here. They're approximately 60 to 80 feet tall, so relatively high. And I know Rich asked about the, um, elevation comparison between the area over here versus where we are at the site. Um, where we are at the site has a base elevation of 356, which sets our peak elevation of our 30 foot tall building to approximately 386. Um, the building at the Steel Farm, the base elevation of the Steel Farm is at approximately 340 with the Steel Farm building appearing to be about 25 feet high. It puts the peak of the building to 379, uh, roughly. So the peak of the proposed building is only about um, seven feet taller than the peak of the Steel Farm building with, you know, a large area of, uh, mature tall evergreen trees, uh, in between. So we feel, we feel that that area of evergreen trees is providing sufficient screening for the proposed building. And in addition to that, in comparison to the existing building next door, um, with the peak of the proposed building for, for this building at 386, the peak of the existing building next door sits at an elevation of 390. So the peak of the building next door is actually four feet higher than the proposed building. Um, you know, based on that information, I did pull up the, uh, the Google Street View from the Steel Farm building and, you know, approximately this area over here is where the existing building is, and this is where the proposed building will be. So you can see, you know, it's not possible for us to exceed the existing building right now. Therefore, you might, you would also not see the proposed building.
Thank you, Limhot. What's the bait? And, and if you don't know, you don't know, but I, this is, I appreciate you taking the time to, to kind of do the diligence on this and kind of walk through the, the, the math and the pictures for us. What's the, uh, base elevation, do you know, of the, of the tree line, kind of right along that building? It's a little bit higher than the base of the site, isn't it? Because the, well, higher than the base of where the building would be. If you don't know, you don't know. That, that's fine. I just.
Where the, where the path is behind the building site.
Right, right.
Eight feet up, I want to say. It was like eight or 10 feet up. I remember the, the cartoon you had of, you know, we're trying, we were trying to ask, answer the question of from the nature trail, how much of the building would you see? So that, that trail is, I think.
It's probably about eight feet higher than the 356. Call it, it's probably around 360, 365, sorry, 370.
Limhot, do you have that elevation you prepared for, for that section that you prepared that you can reference quickly for them?
Yeah, and I guess the point, the point is at 370, there are 60 to 80 foot pine trees and.
Right, that's where I was going, Chris.
Yeah, they're a pretty good screen. So 80 foot pines are a good screen, which the, the street view really helps illustrate that like, yeah, there is a building back there and you can't see that one. And it's slightly taller than the one we're thinking of.
That, that gets you up over four, over 440 feet, 450 feet in that neighborhood.
I, I don't think you're ever going to see the building from this.
Yeah.
It, it'll be visible from 111. That would be, you know, more visible, much more visible there.
No, no, this definitely helps because in my mind, I thought Steel Farm, I thought that hill was higher up than it, I guess it actually is.
Same, that's what I thought too, but.
All right, cool. That helps a lot.
Great, um, so moving along, um, I believe this comment was brought, this question was brought up by, by Cindy, um, to ask the, uh, applicant to consider whether or not they want to do a flat roof for the proposed building. Um, we did ask the question, they did not want to entertain the, the flat roof option. Um, just because we feel, you know, as we, as we said about the, um, the proposed building is going to have a lower peak roof elevation than the existing building next door. So we feel as though, you know, the, the roof shouldn't be a concern. Um, and I think that's really it. I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you so much. Um, I appreciate all the documents that you always bring to these meetings are always very helpful. Um, did, remind me if we've heard back anything from cons come, Limhot, do, have we gotten any additional feedback from them?
I attended the, uh, conservation meeting, um, I want to say a couple of weeks ago. Um, um, but, you know, mainly for the purpose of having a conversation about the different changes that I needed to update them as well as, um, addressing the alternative analysis that was provided. Ultimately, you know, before we even got a chance to, um, you know, talk too much about the alternative analysis, um, I believe one of the commission member had said that, you know, the, they looked at the alternative analysis, they viewed it as, um, unfeasible. Therefore, you know, they appreciated the, the information provided, but, um, alternative analysis off the existing property is not a feasible option, essentially.
Is there a next steps with them at all that?
I believe they're just waiting for us to, um, wrap up our peer review process under Planning Board prior to their approval.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Sue, would you like to, uh, provide the board with some feedback?
All of our issues have been addressed. Um, Bill Murray, uh, gave me a couple of comments on the landscape plan this afternoon that it really might. this afternoon that it really minor. He said, uh, other than the fact that the blue chip juniper, juniper will only grow eight ten inches tall, it won't be much of a screen for the transformer. He wanted to flag that out.
These ones over here.
Um, Sue, oh, Sue, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Had to move my cursor out of the way. Um, so he commented that the the junipers proposed around the transformer won't provide much screening because they're a very low-growing variety. He also commented, there's two, I believe there were dogwood trees on the north side of the building in the islands. And it's not clear what the ground cover under that is going to be, whether or not it's going to be or bark mulch and maybe some in uh, perennials like daylilies, or if it's going to be lawn, it's just not clear what's going on under those um, two trees. So those were Bill's comments. And then um, I spoke to Lim Hut this morning and said, uh, I asked for some clarification on both permanent and temporary wetlands alterations, and that's more for conservation. But that was my only remaining comment. He addressed particularly the de minimis uh, tributary area to um, Mass Ave. Um, and so we're good on that. Uh, so basically, it's down to board input.
Great, thank you, Sue. Um, will you be formalizing those couple of comments for the board, just even in an email form?
Um, I can forward uh, Bill's email.
Perfect.
He responded to me this afternoon and I just have a printed copy of it with me, so I'll forward that to Alec.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, um, opening this up for board comments and uh, and we're going to continue this, obviously, because as Alec explained, uh, because we need a chance to look at the landscape plan, but um, uh, any board comments right off the bat that we can share with um, with Lim Hut and his team. Uh, Alec, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Um, I think this could be a good opportunity to kick off board comments, um, but Lim Hut, um, you can re-characterize this if I if I misinterpret, but um, you have specifically requested a waiver based on the number of planted trees um, as it relates to parking requirements, and you are seeking feedback from the board tonight. If that's a waiver, they would be willing to grant. Would you like to add more character to it than I just did?
Yep. Perfect.
So Madam Chairperson, I think that would be a good place to start the discussion, because if the board was unwilling to grant that waiver, um, that might be a revision that Bruce and Lim Hut could prepare, but I see Bruce has his hand up too.
Okay, uh, Bruce, go ahead.
Yes, we had quite a bit of discussion with um, Bill and Sue about this. Um, I agree to the south, there's limited access to um, screen, but it was the planning board that asked that we do a screening and we put in um, um, tall juniper uh, across there, if I remember correctly, although it may have changed. Um, we actually had them uh, just double checking to see what the symbol is on there. JV, yeah, they're Easton Red Cedar now because Bill had made a comment on uh, deer. Um, although it's in between a high wall and a retaining wall, I don't think the deer would have been much of a problem there from other experiences on other sites. But there's eleven trees there that are going to be, you know, twenty to thirty feet high, and they're going to be providing shade. Um, so we're, you know, if you, if you, even if you don't count those in, we also added three red maples below the wall that within, you know, not too long of a period of time will be, you know, shading that area also. So I I I'm not even sure the waiver is necessary. And I just wanted to point that out from that standpoint, because if you count, don't even count the eleven trees. And those are trees, the junipers, they're growing twenty to thirty feet tall. There's already or a there's already thirteen trees around the building without the eleven. Just wanted to make that point, that we we've done the plantings that you've asked for in the areas.
What is the waiver for?
Lim Hut, would you like to speak to that one more time? I I believe the shade tree requirement required into the in the parking lots, uh, Rich.
Yeah, so what what would it require? If we didn't waive it, what would, what would, what would we be?
Two more trees. Two more shade trees.
In the parking lot, though.
So in and around it, yeah.
In and around it.
If the waiver is not granted, we would have to take out two parking spaces and then use that area for the additional planting.
Okay. And those are, what are the the large circles are junipers, you're saying? Those are the thirty-foot junipers? I can't, I'm on an iPad tonight, sorry, Bruce.
The dark ones right along in the southern edge.
Yeah, so the the ones that are over here, if you're following my cursor.
Yep.
These are the tall junipers. They're eight to ten feet at planting and then grow as high as, uh, I think Bruce said thirty.
Yep.
Can you also just clarify, are there two walls there now? I'm getting confused, so sorry.
There's only one wall there. The uh, the the gray and dash you see up here is just the curbing.
Okay, so how tall is the wall again?
Uh, in some section, it is as high as uh, eight to ten feet. In some section, obviously, you know, as short as four feet.
So the planting's in front of the wall and the and right where your cursor is there.
Yep.
Those are there to screen the wall? Is that essentially what they're? Can we just walk through how tall they are and what they are?
So JV's uh, similarly to the oh, I'm sorry, uh.
They're the same as the ones on top, the Eastern Red Cedar.
One on top. Um, AR, that is red maple. The three, three big circle you see over here, they're red maples.
And those are being planted at how, how high, two and, two and a half feet?
No, no, those are getting planted at uh.
Two and a half to three-inch caliper, Cindy, which is yeah, you know, I don't know, I would maybe say it's like six to eight foot tall tree, but they're they're very narrow when they first go in. Um, they're, you know, it ultimately, after forty years, it'll be a nice big spreading tree, but it's there, um, it's, it takes a while to get there, obviously.
Right, so I guess my general comment, Rebecca, you can, I'm sure we'll weigh in on how do we provide as much screening in front of the wall, in front of the the building as possible? Um, and if there's two trees excess from the parking lot, you know, can we use them elsewhere? Um, you know, I'm fine with moving them out of the parking lot, but um, I I feel this is going to be very visible from the roadway, so I'd like to understand the, or try and impose the best planting plan to get the most screening.
Mm-hmm. Um, I guess my um, I I look at this more cumulatively for the plantings, frankly, um, and I'm I'm concerned about, obviously, we've talked about this Lim Hut, uh, at nauseam probably, but the 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 wall screening, the building screening uh, as seen from the road. And so, you know, when I'm I'm looking back at some of the waivers that we have, um, request four point four point two about planting on each side of the public-private ways, driveways and and such. Um, it looks like at this point, we have one tree proposed, one, um, I guess it's probably a maple there. Uh, it's a rhubarb, um.
There's two up here.
And two up there, um, you know, the 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 real impact is going to be down where this first one is, right? Uh, closer, um, that's going to do uh, more of the screening from the public way um, along that. So we're already waiving um, street trees on both sides of that driveway. We we have very few, in fact, showing along the driveway. Um, I recognize it, um, and I I haven't dug into all the nuances of your your newly proposed plantings up here, um, obviously before tonight, but um, I do recognize that you're um, trying to screen along that wall and and the the building. But I think um, from the roadway, um, needs to have some consideration as well through there. Um, and I know you're trying to stay out of the wetland buffer, you've got a fair amount of restrictions you're you're trying to um, navigate there. Um, the deciduous trees, while they're beautiful and they're very New England, are obviously not going to offer as much as um, the evergreens are going to do for screening yearwide, uh, year-round. So that's also something to give some consideration to in some key spots along here. Um, I love a red maple, but it's um, you know, it it does lose its leaves and it loses all its screening potential out there. So um, definitely something to think about as well. Um, so we've got one waiver for trees on both sides of the of the driveway. We've got one waiver for parking lot reduction, which I'm not necessarily opposed to, frankly, because I feel like the majority should be screening from above, and you do have a fair amount of offset to the the heat island effect with the other trees, even though they're not shade trees necessarily, they will help. Um, and then I'm looking to see if there are anything else regarding besides the fifteen-inch caliper request for, that's it, right? Those are the three that are impacting landscape?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Bruce.
There are eighteen evergreens that are both at the lower end of the wall and on top of the wall that are going to be screening the building. Put that back up, please, if you would.
Yep.
Slide it up here, thank you. We have a very, just clearing enough for the driveway. The tree edge line that's shown is the trunk line and not the canopy line. So you're going to have canopy that's going to be sticking over that driveway, very much like the driveway on the property next door. Way more than the driveway going into the DBW building. And there there's going to be a very limited window that you can see in a a trunk-to-trunk forty, fifty-foot-wide opening when you're going sixty, uh, forty miles an hour down Mass Ave. And then we're putting all these trees, both evergreens and deciduous in between there. And those evergreens are going to be screening the wall from below as well as the building up above. I think we went round and round on the other building when we did the other building many years ago, how much it was going to be able to be seen. And in the middle of the winter, you can barely see it. Uh, I think you got to give a little bit of credence to the trees that are still there in front of it that's a hundred-plus feet thick.
Thank you, Bruce. Um, any additional board comments? Go ahead, Cindy.
Uh, we should talk about the landscaping plan or other comments?
I think you can talk about whatever you want. I appreciate it being brought up, you know, I guess, but I I'd definitely like to just look at it in greater detail, so um.
Okay, I, well, I guess I had a couple of comments about um, uh, what was it talking about? Oh, the the driveway opening um, on Mass Ave, I think as you mentioned, is going to be seventy-two feet wide. I know when it gets to the property line, it's only, I think, twenty-four feet, but um, uh, we may have talked about this before, is this a requirement by DOT based on speed and truck size to have a seventy-two-foot-wide? And can you compare, is the building next door have a similarly wide driveway?
So the building next door does not have a similarly wide driveway. Um, but we did talk about this before, it is a requirement um, with any new project going in, especially commercial project uh, under Mass DOT review for driveway access. Um, typically, the opening is uh, the required opening is twenty-four feet at the property line. Um, that is their typical requirement. As far as the seventy-foot opening at the uh, edge of pavement, that is due to the flaring out of the curb radius. Uh, you can see what I'm tracing with my cursor here. This flaring out of the pavement allows bigger vehicles like, um, you know, WB uh, WB fifty, which is one of those big trailer trucks. Um, it allows them to be able to make a turn in and out of the property without running over the curb. Um, at this point, under any new application that is before Mass DOT, they typically ask for, I believe, a WB sixty-seven to be able to turn into a commercial site, which is like the largest commercial truck. Um, so that that's where the, that's where this this configuration comes from.
Does that entire apron, all the flare-out have to be paved? Are going to be a different material that maybe is a little more it's like stone dust, stone dust or mulch or something? I mean, it doesn't sound like it's going to get used too often, but is it possible to use some other material?
Unfortunately, Mass DOT is very strict with their, the type of material and and that specifications for the pavement that they use. Um, they will not allow substitution.
Yeah, I think Sue echoed all of that at our last meeting as well. Uh, I, due to speeds and stuff, right? Just coming off of what the current speeds are. I'd love to see it narrower, but I understand why it is. Go ahead, Rich.
Sorry, is it, is it a recommendation from DOT or is it a requirement? I'm I'm.
It is a requirement because we are asking to putting a driveway access under their uh, permit application.
Okay. Um, and okay, and so relative to this driveway, and I and I was there, yeah, Lim Hut, you you uh, showed us around, thank you for doing that. Um, so there are those two big trees. Is it confirmed that they are not in the, they're not public shade trees, they're outside of the right-of-way? Has that, has that been confirmed? I mean, maybe we talked about this already, I don't know, I just.
It's it's been confirmed that they're not shade tree under the jurisdiction
Okay.
town of Foxborough, but under the jurisdiction of Mass DOT. Um, I had reached out and spoke with um, a contact I have at Mass DOT District Three to have a conversation about those two trees. She did mention that um, it will have to go through, um, you know, standard review process of landscaping review um, prior to the actual driveway access review, um, which comes in a form of establishing the temporary trap, um, uh, driveway construction, construction driveway.
And I know this driveway was originally further to the east, is that right, on the original plans?
That is correct, yes.
Um, so it's been moved to the west. Um, it, and and like, I'm not looking to make like, make your life difficult here, but I'm I'm going to ask a question. It, is there a reason why it can't go further west? Does it avoid those trees? There's probably some other constraint you're going to tell me that exists there. But it does seem like it curls back to the left. So is there a reason why it doesn't just get pulled to the left more? And you're going to tell me why, I know you are.
It has to do with the uh, the height restriction. So unfortunately, because we do have to cross the stream to meet standard um, stream crossing standards, which requires a certain height, depth, you know, an openness ratio with the culvert that we have to maintain. So moving the driveway further west would puts us at a much lower elevation for the existing grade at the edge of roadway. Therefore, in order to get us to an elevation where we can actually put in a culvert at the crossing, you would be looking at a very, very steep driveway entrance, one that is not feasible for for really turning large vehicles into, just due to the uh, vertical alignment. Uh, you know, you'll you'll be bottoming out as you're trying to turn into the the site.
Okay, alright, thank you. Now, and so relative to those two trees, right? So I I know it always comes down to, geez, that one tree or that's that other tree. Um, so they come out, is there? I guess, and let me go down the path of, is there a and I know that you've got this great grading on the left side, is that all? We talked about this, that's all sort of landscaped, right? There's no retaining wall in there, or is there on the left side of the driveway going up?
There is no retaining wall along this side, no, it's all, it's all grading.
Yeah.
Um, it is two-to-one slope grading, which we're trying to limit the grading by using the um, the erosion control blanket as part
Right.
uh, permanent solution to stabilize the slope. So we have reduced um, our limited grading into the the buffer zone by using the erosion control blanket.
Okay, and and okay, so that's the buffer zone. But back down on the street, so I I guess where I was going is, is there a wave? Those are two very large oaks um, coming out presumably. Um, is there an opportunity to kind of replace them like with something on either side? And I and I, you're probably going to tell me it's all wet on both sides or whatever. So that's kind of my first question. And the second question is, it gets kind, and it's really all about the same question. And that is the, and and Bruce kind of commented, hey, we were, and I wasn't on the board at the time, but a lot of discussion about the other building, and now you can't see it. Um, and I admit, I drive by it, I I can't see it. But like I, this building, I thought that there was a lot more exposure to the east of the driveway. And with those two trees coming out, is there an opportunity to plant trees that will replace them over time? And then and then is there? Is the screening up against the building adequate to truly protect the Mass Ave view? Because I my, I was there and there are definitely trees, but it doesn't feel as thick as it is on the other property. thick as it is on the other property to the east of the driveway. So kind of a two-part question, I guess.
So I, I guess I'll, I'll start with the fact that um, you know, we're, we're not claiming that you won't be able to see this building. Um, we understand that the amount of existing screening that we're, we're leaving behind is less than um, the one next door, obviously is, is at a closer distance as well. But we are trying to mitigate it uh as best as we can by providing these uh, screening trees at the top here. You know, um, second uh, secondary to that, um, you know, uh, kind of going back to these two trees right here. Um, the review engineer did mention to me that when we go through the landscaping review process under DOT, they will ask for replacement planting. Um, obviously, it has to be at a location where it doesn't affect line of sight, so it can't be. Right in, right at the side of the driveway here, but obviously, um, let me just scroll up for a second. We could be looking at additional plantings here and here, here and here, you know, those general areas. Furthermore, if they can't find a spot that would be, you know, reasonable to provide replacement planting, they would ask for um, they would ask for, I guess, some, like a betterment fee for, for planting uh within the right of way. Um, so there, there is a process to replace or compensate for the loss of those two trees. It's just, we're not, we're not there yet because we can't apply for the actual application until we get through uh planning board approval.
Well, what, what if, what if you did it now? I mean, I, because I, I mean, I think that's a great idea, adding some additional trees. Um, and you could take, I mean, I, I don't know how it works, right? I mean, but you could, you know, you could include in your application that, yeah, as part of the Boxborough Planning Board, we agreed that we would add, you know, I don't know, you know, oak trees that would grow to be, you know, that size along that roadway. Well, back a bit, it's probably what, back 20 feet?
Yeah, I, I think the only issue with that is that um, we can't actually propose anything with a guarantee when it comes to um, the, within the limit of the right of way. Obviously, it would need approval from Mass DOT itself. Um, you know, it could be put in as an approval condition to have a further conversation with the board or some sort of a promise to provide replacement planting. Um, but it, it would have to be under the review of Mass DOT before we can guarantee that anything that we want to put in, basically.
Okay, thank you.
I like where you're going with this, Rich, honestly, because my um, sticky point has been from, as seen from the, the roadway here as well. Um, so even if, you know, those are significant trees coming out, even if they could go, I'm, I'm motioning, you can't see where my mouse is going, but behind the right of way, you know, inward of the property um, uh, and just keep the DOT separate from this altogether. It sounds like, well, no, I'm thinking actually along the driveway, uh, Limhut, like to the sides of the driveway.
Oh, let's see. There.
Or even where you graded already, you know, with the crossing here. Alec, we need to learn how to annotate on this. This drives me bonkers. Just to, to the left of your um.
Right here.
Uh, yeah, so on the upside of that, no, go down, yep, to the right.
Um, well, this is right in the middle of the wetland, so.
No, 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 it's down, you had it down and to the right, like in between the edge of driveway and that uh retaining aspect there.
Um. Okay, well, we'll take a look at it.
Just to bend down the driveway a little bit, uh, Limhut, eventually, you know what I mean? I, I think that's a, a great idea. Um, would, and I know that probably, and I know they answer this question, but um, it's very interesting to hear about your calculations with the DOT and stuff. Um, do they have like standardized um, calc's for uh, tree replacements and stuff like that for such a project?
As far as I'm concerned, um, as, well, as far as I know, um, I don't believe they do. They have a reviewer who specifically looks at um landscaping within the right of way. Uh, but I personally never gone through that process myself. It was just being explained to me by a contact that we have at, at Mass DOT.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. And then uh, you said there's a, a betterment option um, that they, if you can't find a spot for whatever replacements they request of you, um, is, does that get paid into their overall Massachusetts pot? Or is it something that gets applied to Boxborough specifically? It's a two-part question, so I have a, a part B to that.
Uh, well, the answer, the, the second part is that I believe it goes to the, the towns that are located within District Three specifically.
And so it wouldn't necessarily apply to Boxborough? And would there, I guess, when you're dealing and wheeling and dealing with the DOT over this, I, it would be interesting to find out. We do have a tree bylaw in town. If that could be paid into the tree uh, um, preservation fund of Boxborough specifically, um, that would be pretty cool if we could, you know, have the, any fees that if you weren't able to replant, fees could go into that. I don't know if you could actually work that magic, but um, it would be great to keep, you know, um, adding more trees to our town itself, so.
Okay, well, you know, we'll, we'll take that into consideration, but I think at the very least, we can at least start with providing um, maybe a couple oak trees planting in this area. Let's just, you know.
I, I know the rest is down the, the, the pipeline a little bit, but I appreciate you letting me pick your brain a little bit. Thank you. Um, and Alec does have a copy of that bylaw available too, if you want to look at it.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay, uh, additional board comments at this time? Cindy?
Yeah, I don't know if this came up in Sue's review originally, but this um, section four point, oh, what is it? 4.7.2, the proposed Route 111 Trail. And um, if um, I think it has to do with, if you can't put sidewalks along the, the trail, then um, a contribution would need to be made to the trail fund. Um, was that already flagged by, by our town engineer?
Well, I don't know that I did. Um, I know you always bring it up. So that was more of an opinion on the board, whether or not you want them to build a sidewalk or a donation, because I know that came up on other Mass Ave sites.
Okay, well, I've always asked, you're right, Sue, I always ask, what is the status of the, the Route 111 Trail master plan? And uh, I've never gotten an answer, but um, I would suggest that, you know, this, this item is part of our site plan review regulation, so um, would, uh, would ask the applicant to address it.
Um, well, it was uh, it wasn't brought up during um, in the peer reviews documents that we receive. Um, as, as far as I know, there are no sidewalk currently um, along this section, at least of, of Mass Ave. Um, not, not quite sure how to answer that. Um, you know, there's no sidewalk at the moment. Um, if there are previous projects who have paid into this fee, um, we'd love to have a chance to take a look at what, how much was actually paid in comparison to the uh type of development it was.
Yeah, I don't know if uh, is it 871 is the neighbor next door? I don't know if that project did. We did put it in another decision, but that project did not advance, so um, yeah, it's certainly within our uh purview, I guess, to uh, to require it, so I, I'm. Maybe other board members want to weigh in now or think about it a little bit, but uh, I believe we have had other contributions to a sidewalk fund. I don't know that we have had many contributions to a trail fund. Alec, do you know anything more? Have you, I think I tasked you with this a long time ago. About a trail, 111 trail fund?
Um, no project during my term here has had this contribution made. I think that's in part just due to the nature of where the projects in my tenure have been, not along 111. Um, you have previously shared with me documents on it, and I think it might be worthwhile to just kick off a little working group to, to start really compartmentalizing, figuring it out. But um, between now and your next meeting, I can sit down with the applicant, um, and we can uh calculate what that fee would be.
Yeah, and I believe our town engineer provided us some um, sidewalk estimates for a different project, not on Mass Ave, so I don't know if she wants to, to weigh in, but uh, she had some quotes for linear, per linear foot, I believe. So anyway, if you guys want to tackle that, I think it would be valuable to assess it and come back to us and let us know.
Great. Um, board members, any other uh, comments? Rich?
Yeah, just real quickly, is there a, so sidewalk fund, and, and maybe this will get resolved in Alex's discussion, is there a plan? Like, is there a, like?
There is, there is an engineered plan from 20 some odd years ago of the trail along Route 111 on that side of the roadway. Uh, maybe not all the way on that side of the roadway, but there is an engineered plan.
So this is not, not related to this uh, public hearing, but I, I think that's something we probably ought to put in the bucket of the Mass Ave discussion, because I'm supportive, but like I, I, without a plan and without a direction, it just seems rudderless and I, I don't, I don't know where it goes. So, but I, thank you, Cindy, I, I appreciate that, glad.
Yeah, I've given it to the town planner in the past, but happy to dig it out again and send it to you all.
Yeah, I think, Rich, that whole part from um, connecting like Blanchard and stuff all the way over to Liberty Square like that, all part of that um, plan.
Okay.
Which is fantastic for, right, you know, access to the school and the library.
Yep.
I would, I would send my kids on a bike if I felt like they'd be safe along the road.
Yeah, yeah, I know, still got to work on speed mitigation, but yeah.
Yeah.
Or it could go all the way up to Liberty Square. Um, there's some, there's some windy bits and Duggans Brook, which would be kind of a problem because it floods anyway, so.
That's another discussion for another day, but it's a good discussion to have. So um, any other comments for the board members?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Limhut, do you have um, the questions answered that you needed information on today?
Um. I think we still need a direction about the um, hang on one second. Um, I'm sorry, did we ever get, receive a direction regarding the uh landscaping waiver specifically? Um, because ultimately, if we need to rip out two parking space to add in two more trees, obviously, it's not, it's not the worst, um, it can be done. Um, I just want to make sure we can prepare that so that we're ready for the next meeting, just so that we can keep things moving along.
Thanks.
Can you put the waiver request document up so we can just tick them off?
Uh, I, I kind of stated my feelings about it, Limhut. I think that um, you know, I think that you are going to be providing enough offset. I would, I would tend to give the waiver for that, honestly, with the, the, even though they're evergreen screens, they're going to provide shade to the, the um, you know, they're on the south, right? That's the southern side of the property. Yeah, so I, I think you're gonna, I, I would say I'm in favor of it.
Good.
But others should speak up too. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I didn't, I didn't clearly articulate it yet, but yeah, the explanation of, if we put them here, the roots will risk the leach fields, and we have enough other things going around. I think the heat island of the parking lot is being mitigated enough, and you're being, you know, mindful of trying to add additional screening from, from Mass Ave. So it's, it's fine, fine to me.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy, do you have a comment on that, Rich?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that waiver. The other one, though, on both sides of the driveway, I think we're still trying to grapple with that one, aren't we?
Put it somewhere else.
Yeah, I, I would agree that, yeah, again, for me, the cumulative kind of effect of waivers is, is something that I just want to study a little bit closer in plan um, when, when, when we get to review that one that you just.
Yeah, so I'm okay with the, the parking waiver, parking tree waiver.
Cindy, do you have a feeling about that?
Yeah, I think I indicated before, I'm okay with that waiver. I just, I, I count on the, you Rebecca, to help us make sure this screening is appropriate in the right places, but I'm okay with that waiver.
Okay. Um, are we okay, Limhut, like deferring the rest of them for our next discussions when we see you come back with a couple more um, screen trees?
Um, yes.
Okay, but you, um, I think you have approval to uh, get that waiver for the um, the, the parking lot trees, so no need to pull out your extra parking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, um, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to continue this to Alec?
Um, Madam Chairperson, you would seek a motion to continue this public hearing till uh, October 6th at 7:35 PM.
Thank you so much. Uh, would anybody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Rich, seconded by Chris. Any more discussion?
Yeah, we had October 6th as a possible PV meeting, but I guess it's a real thing now, correct?
Yeah, there's enough stuff.
Yeah, we um, we had had October 6th on the books, but then we had a possible for the 29th. Um, we opted, or at least to the best of my knowledge, this board has opted not to leverage the 29th and instead proceed with the 6th.
Oh, we're not going to have a meeting on the 29th?
Unless, um, unless you see fit to do so.
No, that works for me, but.
A break would be very welcomed.
No meeting on the 29th.
I won't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Deleted, thank you. Um, perfect, so the, the 6th, so we have a motion on the table. Um, we've had discussion, uh, any other discussion? Okay, roll call as I see you. Chris Doughty?
Doughty, aye.
Uh, Cindy Markowitz?
Mark Woods, aye.
Rich Guzzardi?
Guzzardi, aye.
Verner, aye. Um, thank you so much for coming in and, and walking us through your proposals and apologies for uh, um, the need to review that document, but um, thank you for bearing with us on that. Okay, we'll, we'll try to get through that next time we meet on the 6th, so have a great night.
You too. Thank you.
And then.
Do you need me for anything else?
Oh, please, Sue, thank you so much. You feel free to go away. Go home.
I'm going to give you a real quick update. Uh, Priest Lane, uh, did they finish paving on um, last week? And I did a pedal check today and it's all set, so you'll be seeing that for bond reduction coming in your next meeting.
All right, where is this?
Priest Lane.
Extension.
Oh, that's still out there.
Yep. The lots have been done, they just did the finished paving on the, on the roadway portion, so.
Yeah, Sue, do you mind sticking around just for one last second? I think Rebecca and I might be picking up on the same thing on the agenda.
Yes, I, well, why don't, why doesn't she just speak to that right now so we can let her go and we'll take it out of order? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Can we do that? So um, the enclave, do you have an enclave update for us?
Uh, last I talked, spoke to them, they uh, I talked to Jason Fenton probably a month and a half ago, and he was waiting for the okay to do the removal of the, the roadway and the replication area. I have not seen anything about it or heard anything, and their weekly or bi-weekly SWIP updates don't mention any work in that area, so I don't think they've started at all.
I think it expires on, what, the 25th of September?
Went up shortly.
But what happens if it expires and the work hasn't been done?
They'll have to refile a notice of intent because the door shuts, they can't do work once their order of conditions expires.
Is it the order of condition that expires or is it our extension? I believe, I thought, I believe our permit extension expires. I don't know about the NOI.
I, I think it may be both of them.
So, so to the board, um, candidly. Madam Chairperson, do you want me to speak to that real quick?
Yeah, please, go ahead, Alec.
So, so a planning board decision is tied to substantial completion of a project. In this case, there's a clear substantial completion. An order of conditions is not beholden to that same, that same burden. Um, with an order of conditions, the moment it lapses, you are required by the Wetlands Protection Act to come back in. And it doesn't matter how far along in the project you are, at that point, the Wetlands Protection Act kicks in because there's an assumption that the wetlands have modified and changed because of the ongoing work and the, the failure to complete replication or remediation in a window of time. Um, obviously, their permit in that regard is intimately tied to your planning board permit, so we can evaluate it from that regard, but ultimately, the burden falls in the Wetlands Protection Act and the notice of intent.
Cindy, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just going to go look up the um, the extension agreement, but oh, I can do that offline, I guess, I just uh, that, that sounds, that sounds discouraging. I know we're holding out a bond.
Well, I will note that this part, you would be well within your authority to hold their bond. It would not be something that you could pull the bond for at this stage, I don't believe, unless they express that they were not going to do the work, in which case, then I think you'd be within your rights to do so. But you are not beholden to release that bond if they have not completed the work.
In theory, couldn't this go on for a long while if, potentially? I mean, keeping the road open and the money in our um, account or, you know what I mean? Like. keeping the road open and the money in our um account or, you know what I mean, like? Is there any way to reinforce that, I guess, to make it happen?
Yeah, so practically speaking, in in a case like this, what I would recommend is if they fail to meet that deadline, at that point, the board would want to uh would want to write a letter. It would want to be written format um requesting information on when they would complete the replication or remediation, whatever might be involved in it. Um, if there was no response to that or the response was wildly outside the bounds of a reasonable time, at that point, you could choose to explore leveraging the bond. But you would first need to give them another opportunity. That's always my recommendation. Give them the bite of the apple, the chance to say whether they're going to complete it um and let them present to you the reason why it hasn't been completed.
So one of the concerns will be that uh to get a valid order of conditions to allow them to work in that area typically takes probably a month and a half between the advertising and the statutory timelines. And they'll be outside of the growing season for this fall. If you recall, we were really pushing to get the the spring growing season um window of opportunities. So um. I'm not sure what I, it's probably in a holding pattern now for a while.
Yeah, I would agree with you on that.
So the email we got from Alec in May said this month they're going to they will commence decommissioning and replication as proposed in the original application. Um. Let's see, they are able to continue in this way without a new N O I due to the November twenty-four Permit Extension Act. So um, all right, so what I'm just trying to say, what's the timeline for when the N O I or when the order conditions expires?
Uh, this September, I I don't have the date off the top.
Okay, so it is September.
I believe so, yes. The end of the month. I'll I'll look it up and respond to the board with a date and I'll respond to that original thread just to keep it all together.
The twenty-fifth is sticking in my head. I don't know why. I'm probably wrong, but. Um, thank you, Alec, for following up on that for us.
Yeah, and thank you, Sue, for for sticking around to to add the character to it.
Not a problem.
Any other questions for Sue before she logs off? Okay, Sue, go into your night.
Right, good night, everybody.
Bye.
Thanks.
Thanks so much. Okay, uh, one more hearing, guys. Uh, public hearing for footnote five zoning bylaw revision, the Boxborough Planning Board will conduct a public hearing pursuant uh to M G L Chapter forty A, Section five, on Monday, September fifteenth twenty twenty-five at eight oh five, well, eight oh five, ten thirteen P M to consider uh amendment of footnote five of the Table of Dimensional Regulations to provide greater flexibility for public safety uses in the Town Center District. Um, the proposed zoning bylaw amendments are available for review on the Planning Board page of the town website at W W W box uh dot Boxborough dash mass dot gov and on file in the Boxborough Planning Department located at twenty-nine Middle Road, Boxborough, Mass, zero one seven one nine. Okay, Alec, let's pull it up. Hopefully, this one is not uh too lengthy for us.
So Madam Chairperson, I have um, I have uh exported this from the warrant as it was sent to print. So you can see in its format, you can see that uh some committees have chosen to weigh in um in advance, specifically the Fire Station Building Committee, the Finance Committee. Uh, the Select Board also chose to defer their recommendation until town meeting. Of course, this this proposed article was subject of discussion during your public hearing on Article One. Um, but at the time, you were unable to take a vote because the uh public hearing notice did not provide robust enough language to cover such revisions as footnotes.
Thank you, Alec. Um. This, everybody's read this. Um, does anyone have any comments or concerns about it as it's presented here? Rich, go ahead.
Are you sure? I didn't see that. Am I just?
No, no comment or concern. Is the understanding that we take this up? Um, we, are we taking this up with the passage of Article One? Are we taking this up anyway?
It's a good question.
I I think the intent was to take it up regardless.
Yeah, I think because it's a separate article, it would be discussed, it would be taken up regardless. If Article One uh fails and we want to pass over for for discussion, we could do that, but.
Yeah.
As a separate article, that would be discussed regardless of of outcome.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is public safety building is defined in the Article One.
Yeah, it gets a little awkward.
Public safety building, you get it actually can put in a public safety building in Article One. Yeah.
Men down the floor with the definition of public safety building.
Yeah, we could steal it from it. If hopefully, it's not needed, so.
Yep.
Any other comments?
I'm just a little concerned that we didn't get to this public hearing um in a timely manner this evening, so um, public, doesn't appear there's anyone from the public.
Yeah, just us, I think, at this point in the crowd.
Um, so I don't know if that means we should continue it with another day just to let the public weigh in or you know, it doesn't feel right to close the hearing without public.
Can we do that in time to still have everything proper on the warrant?
The warrant's gone to print.
This is on the one.
We we have time, don't we, Alec?
No, the warrant has gone to print, which is why.
I know, but for a public hearing uh without closing this?
Oh, yeah, you you could close this public hearing the the night of town meeting at six P M in a classroom if you wanted, yeah.
Okay.
As long as it closes before town meeting opens, you're covered. I I mean, if we think that we want to leave it open to get public input, seeing how there's no public here, maybe we can take this up. I mean, Rebecca, maybe this is worth taking up early in the agenda on the sixth, just for the sake of like giving people an opportunity to say something. I I don't think there's much to talk about here, but I do agree that it'd be good, you know. If the late hours push the public away, then maybe it's worth um giving them a shot at it.
I potentially put this first on on the sixth. I don't know if we can do that, reordering the the agenda. Uh, just because I I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of pushback on it. But I I do like the idea of, you know, giving the public a chance to say something we haven't thought of. Um, and it not just only being discussed as the last thing of a very lengthy meeting when people are just exhausted and leave anyway.
Alec, um, we've already mentioned a seven oh five and a seven thirty-five. Um, could, I mean.
So Madam Chairperson, you could you could just book this as a seven P M. You can you can.
That's what I was wondering. If we could just squeeze it in as a seven oh two or something like that and just make it happen first on our agenda. Because I think that's valid. It is very late for people to that stuck around for this. It it probably will be rather short, I anticipate, but.
Yeah, it doesn't feel contentious, but we've got to give the public the opportunity to yell at us about something we didn't, we haven't considered.
In in um, with respect to articles and and maybe we want to move on to this, but I do have a question. Maybe it's on the agenda. Uh, I do have a question about present, who's presenting what article at town meeting is is a question I have, but maybe that's a separate agenda. Yes, I would recommend taking those up separately. Um, for now, you should determine your course of action. It sounds like the board would like to do a continuation of this public hearing until October sixth at seven P M. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, uh, moved by, was it?
Mark.
Oh, by Mark, thank you, and seconded by Chris?
Yep.
Okay, got one of them right. All right, thank you. Roll call as I see you. Um, Mark White.
White, aye.
Rich Gazzardi.
Gazzardi, aye.
Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
Cindy Markowitz.
Mark Woods, aye.
And Werner, aye. All right, thank you, guys. Um, moving on, um, we received a number of uh correspondence. Some of it was um recited today as well, so I don't know that unless anybody wants to go through anything specific, we could probably skip through that. Sounds like it's okay. All right, planners report. Go ahead, Alec.
All right, um, I wanted to share with the board. Um, today we posted the flyers, but um, I will be or my office will be hosting a Fall Town Meeting info session. Um, it's an opportunity for members of the public to come out to a new and unique style of public forum. It's not our traditional come, sit for an hour and listen. Um, it's actually an opportunity where people can come in and out revolving door style. It's called Night at the Museum is what we're we're terming it, and I did steal that from someone. Uh, but effectively, it takes no more than fifteen, twenty minutes for someone to walk through the space. Uh, while we aren't providing childcare, it's all contained within one room, and we will have a table set up with coloring books, various games and activities for for kids to kind of entertain themselves. But uh, in my own past practice working with children, that quick action of timeliness to be able to get in and out, plus some some light activities in the middle, does lend itself well. Um, so uh, you'll be seeing the flyer of that circulating around. I did not get it out the door to you today. Uh, but I will be forwarding that along, and I encourage you to post it on any social medias you might have and such. We're really trying to hit that audience that doesn't typically come to these types of events, doesn't typically come to town meeting. Um, we'll be hosting it on September twenty-ninth. Uh, it's the Monday two weeks from tonight. Uh, and uh, that week will also be the week that people have a deadline to register to vote for Fall Town Meeting, so we'll have information available on how to do so. Um, otherwise, uh, Chris volunteered separately for the Civics Academy. Yeah, so Chris, as long as I'm keeping you roped in for that.
Yeah, fine.
Perfect. I'll curtail him in for that. Um, I did send out an email mid-meeting to the other boards and committees that were asked to attend. Um, and so we'll be processing that pretty shortly, but um, otherwise, that's what I'll I'll keep it short and sweet, uh, and I'll stick to that tonight.
Thank you, Alec. Um, moving on to commu- uh, committee reports.
Rebecca, before we leave, Alec, can I ask a question to the planner? Um, a few weeks ago, we voted to um, send a couple of questions to the Building Commissioner. Um, we have not heard back from uh on that. And uh, curious if you had gotten a response, um.
I will have to check with Ian. Um, I don't know whether that landed on his desk or my desk as an action item. Um, Ian is not with us tonight. He's on a sick day, but he'll be back in the office tomorrow. Um, and uh, if we haven't heard back yet, we will get an answer for you by the end of the day Thursday when Ed clocks out and forward those answers out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, committee reports, uh, C P C?
Oh, um, had first meeting and most of the members were new, so it was basically discussing, you know, what this group is uh and how it functions.
Thank you. Um, let's see, D R B, nothing new to report at this time. Um, E D C?
Um, quick question on D R B before.
Yeah.
We see Rebecca, is there um discussion at all about um Mass Ave and design standards um beyond Town Center? Has that been something on the on the Design Review Board calendar?
That is so interesting that you mentioned that. Um, yes, Alec and I, um, we've been discussing uh in a little bit of an expanded scope, a little right rewrite, you know, the potential for this stuff. Um, uh, rewrite of the uh recommend, um, yeah, the guidelines. Um, he has secured, um, he's in conversations about um some funding to um take on something through Tufts um to to help with some of this stuff, uh, which is fantastic. So um, that's kind of where we are. Uh, we're going to be setting up a meeting just to discuss this, um, once we have something kind of in hand to review with the board. Um, and that'll be a topic of discussion.
When you when you say meeting, that's with the Design Review Board?
Yes, yeah, yeah, to to just kind of initiate the conversation. So um, Alec and I have had a little bit of um behind the scenes kind of discussions about um trying to secure some funding for such an effort.
Okay, great.
That's where we are. But yeah, exciting stuff. Um, hopefully, we'll get a bunch of support from all the folks that have already expressed it, so.
Yeah, good. Um, and then just for the E D C, uh, so the there's a meeting this Thursday. There was a meeting two weeks ago. There's a lot of act, a lot of the 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 committee's pretty busy right now, so focus is on um October eighteenth from eleven to three. Uh, it's Boxborough Village for a Day, so it's a um microurbanism event where basically we're going to get the intent and we have support of multiple landowners. The intent is to create a village environment for the four hours uh from the Middle Sex Bank Plaza up to uh the Town Hall and the um church and then potentially across the street to the historic buildings and creating really sort of side, you know, highlighting the sidewalk access, potentially creating additional walk access on the northbound side. Um, and creating, um, you know, putting getting vendors, businesses, local businesses, existing businesses who are in the village to participate, as well as bringing new businesses in, bringing um some food potentials in, but basically creating a village environment. It's the last day of the freebie market is that day, so and it like might overlap an hour. Um, so anyway, that's that's the focus uh on the E D C right now. So a lot of planning going on, getting businesses organized and getting the word out on that.
Great, thank you, Rich.
Yep.
Um, Magic?
Nothing new, monthly meetings, so just kind of from meeting to meeting.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Um, Water Resources?
Uh, yeah, we meet tomorrow night. I think we're going to go over the uh last input that we've got to give to the consultant on the comprehensive water reports. We'll be discussing that. That's all.
Thanks, Cindy. Uh, and B L F will be meeting at the very last day of this month, so the thirtieth. Um, so nothing new as of yet. Um. Okay, under General Business, uh, future articles for consideration. Um, I told you all that I'd be leaving that on there. Uh, it's ten twenty-seven. Do we want to discuss anything at this moment? It'll be on for a while, so.
Yeah, I guess the question is, would, just backward planning, uh, not to discuss any particular article, but when would we be bringing things forward for public hearing if we're going to hit annual town? Is annual town meeting the next logical spot?
Then there is going to be a December town meeting, correct, Alec?
Um, there's a placeholder for December town meeting. Um, I don't know that the Select Board has activated it yet.
That's going to be a tough one to pull off.
Yeah.
In the middle of the holiday season.
Hate the audience.
Yeah, I guess my I guess my question is if we're targeting annual town meeting, what what's the uh, what's the timeline? Like, when do we need to be bringing, you know, articles and discussions forward or having hearings? So um, to to answer that question, um, the way you calculate that is you count backwards by six months to the day that you open town meeting. Um, if you host a public hearing for a zoning article more than six months, say, six months and one day before town meeting, you're required by law to renotice the public hearing and reopen it. Um, and so it'll be six months back from that date. I think it's in May, so as long as your public hearings are December or later, um, you're covered for annual town meeting. Okay.
Would you be able to just put us together a little timeline kind of cheat sheet for that? Just that would be helpful. Just I think you did something similar for us this time around. It would be nice to apply it so we can start planning.
Yeah, we can do a, we can do a target date calendar, and what I'll do is I'll give you um date ranges for things.
Sweet. Thanks, Alec.
Thank you. And I will note too, um, I I do know that Kelly and Mike are hard at work in the Administrator's Office, starting to model out um the timelines for budget season and such as well, so I'll incorporate those dates and when you would expect to have printing deadlines and such as well.
Yeah, that's really helpful. Um, thank you. Um, okay, hey, um, we're at that time of the meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, move. But oh, was it? Oh, moved by Mark again. Thank you. I I have to be looking at you to see it for whatever reason. Moved by Mark and seconded by Chris. Thank you. Um, and he's signing to me at this hour now. Um, so as I see you, um, any discussion? Okay, uh, Cindy Markowitz.
Mark Woods, aye.
Mark White.
White, aye.
Rich Gazzardi.
Gazzardi, aye.
And Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
And Werner, aye. Thank you all for putting in the time again.